Test, test?
Oh, got it.
Test? I heard the test.
Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna just test for a second and see if folks who are online or on Zoom can hear me. It looks like the answer is yes, so we're gonna begin. First of all, thank you for your patience, everybody. We've been working through some technical issues and also to make sure that we had a quorum from both commissions this evening. So, good evening and welcome to the special joint meeting of the Menlo Park Housing Commission and the Menlo Park Planning Commission. I want to pause for just a moment and acknowledge the massive impact of the recent series of storms in our community and the state, and most importantly, to thank our city staff and first responders for their incredible work on all of our behalf through this period. We are extremely grateful for your efforts. Turning to the matter at hand this evening, we are very glad that you've decided to join us. We're very glad that you've worked through this glitchiness of the past half an hour and are here, as this is the final time these two commissions will be considering our city's housing element for the 2023 to 2031 planning period. My name is Chris DeCarty and I currently serve as Chair of the Planning Commission. It's my understanding that because the Chair of the Housing Commission is unable to join us this evening, that I will serve as Chair for this joint meeting throughout. We encourage your active participation during public comment this evening, particularly and especially if this is the first time you have joined a meeting of this kind. So, to learn just how to do that, let me turn now to Chris Turner, who will be our clerk this evening, and he'll explain to you how you will be able to participate.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. Regarding the procedures for communicating at tonight's meeting, the commissioners participating remotely will have their webcams on for the duration of the meeting. Commissioners in the council chambers will use the microphone at the dais to speak. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions remotely by clicking the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. Alternately, if you are calling into tonight's meeting, please click star nine on your keypad and that will notify staff that you have a comment. If multiple people are speaking from the same account tonight, please let us know at the beginning of your time and we will make sure each person gets a chance to speak. For those participating in person this evening, if you would like to give public comment, please fill out a speaker card located at the back of the room and hand it to me. And with that, I will hand it back to you, Chair DeCarty.
Great, thank you, Mr. Turner. With that, I'll turn to item B, which is roll call for this evening. I'm gonna begin with the Housing Commission. And here in the dais, I will ask each commissioner to go ahead and unmute and verbally acknowledge that you're here, just to make sure that we can hear you through the course this evening. So, first here in the dais, Commissioner Merriman.
Present.
And then remotely, I see Commissioner Nguyen.
Present.
Commissioner Walker.
Present.
And then I'm not clear about the fourth commissioner from... Is it Commissioner Pimentel?
Pimentel, and I'm here.
All right, are you able to join us on camera this evening, Commissioner?
I am, I will in a little bit.
All right, terrific, thank you. I believe the commissioners then, Bigelow and Campos. And Leach will not be here, is that correct? Okay, so we have a quorum from the Housing Commission. Thank you, Commissioner Pimentel. Let me then turn to the Planning Commission. And we'll begin with Commissioner Barnes.
Good evening, President.
Commissioner Doe.
Present.
Vice Chair Harris.
Present.
Commissioner Schindler.
Present.
Commissioner Tate.
Present.
Commissioner Riggs will not be joining this evening, and I am Chris DeCarty. My pronouns are he/him, and I am Chair, and I'm here this evening. So, with that, we have a quorum from both commissions with us this evening. I'll now turn to item C on our agenda, that's reports and announcements. And who am I turning to? Apologies.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. I have one announcement, and I'm excited to announce that the city recently released a Notice of Funding Availability, also commonly known as ANOFA. This is an opportunity for affordable housing developers to provide proposals to the city to seek funding for the preservation and production of affordable housing. Currently, we have about 1.5 to 2 million dollars available for this round, and the period closes on January 27th. So, we invite interested parties and we look forward to being able to serve our community through this NOFA process.
Great, thank you, Ms. Chow. Any questions for staff commissioners at this point? All right. Seeing none, then we'll turn to item D, which is public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission... Excuse me, on any subject not listed on the agenda, each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. So, Mr. Turner, do we have public comment on... This is again, not on the agenda items tonight, but on any other matter?
Once again, if you would like to give general public comment and you are participating online, please click the raise hand button. I do not see any at the moment, and I do not have any comment cards for general public comment.
Let's go ahead and give it a minute. Still none?
Still no hands raised and no comment cards.
All right, with that, I will go ahead and close public comment. We are now moving on to item E, public hearing. We have one item this evening, that is item E1, the reason we are here. The Planning Commission and the Housing Commission review of the housing element for the 2023 to 2031 planning period and the following actions. Adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission recommending the city council certify the subsequent environmental impact report, or SEIR. Adopt California Environmental Quality Act findings. Adopt a statement of overriding considerations for significant and unavoidable impacts, and approve a mitigation and monitoring program for the housing element project. And two, adopt Planning Commission and Housing Commission resolutions recommending that the city staff amend the general plan to update the housing element. I'm gonna go ahead and turn to Mr. Smith to walk us through how we'll handle that this evening, and then come back and I'll clarify anything, and then we'll go from there, so...
Thank you, Chair DeCarty, and good evening to members of the Planning and Housing Commissions. Thank you for joining us this evening. I have a presentation that I will pull up here to share with you. So, the purpose of tonight's joint meeting of the Housing and Planning Commissions is to provide recommendations to the city council on the housing element. The Housing Commission will make a recommendation on adoption of the housing element, and the Planning Commission will make a recommendation on certification of the subsequent environmental impact report, which we call the SEIR, and adoption of the housing element. And so, the recommendations will be reviewed by city council at its January 31st meeting, where the council will take final action on the SEIR and housing element. In order to comply with state law, the housing element must be adopted by January 31st. And adoption of the element by this date will allow the city to maintain administration of local zoning, provide access to funding options to help develop affordable housing in the community, and allow staff to begin focus on implementation of the housing element programs. So, the recommended meeting procedure for this evening that staff is proposing would be first a presentation by city staff and the SEIR consultant, which I'm starting into now, and then any clarifying questions from commissioners of either commission, followed by public comments on the SEIR and housing element, then any discussion among commissioners, and after that, individual recommendations would need to be made according to each commission's role. And so, in a slight change from the staff report recommendation, staff would recommend that the Planning Commission first take action on the recommendation for SEIR certification, followed by Housing Commission's recommendation on the housing element, and finally, Planning Commission's recommendation on the housing element. And so, before moving further into the presentation, I'm gonna pause and just check in with you, Chair DeCarty, to make sure that's the preferred format for the remainder of the meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Smith, I appreciate that. I just want to clarify with everybody that essentially what we're gonna do is we're gonna thread this together with the Housing and Planning Commission in sequence through the presentations, any clarifying questions, public comment, and then coming back. We can have some initial discussion together, but ultimately, then, we will move toward first the Planning Commission focusing on the SEIR, in which case, we'll have Planning Commission participation. Once that's done, we'll move toward the Housing Commission being able to take the lead on their questions to get to their resolution. We can have some questions of planning initially, but as they get to the point where they actually need to make a recommendation in this, they need to vote on something, the Housing Commission needs to hear among themselves and not have planning as engaged. When they are done, then we'll move to Planning Commission to take over and to do our piece. So, it's really... First of all, I just want to make sure that all commissioners understand, and second of all, to... You know, I'll try to move us when it makes sense from joint conversation to the specifics on this, and if any commissioner from either commission has an issue with that at the time, by all means, just raise your hands and we'll address it then. So, I'm not trying to truncate our participation, but just trying to get it pointed in the right direction at the right time. So, any commissioners have any questions or concerns about our approach tonight, and most importantly, do you know when, you know, in this sequence, that you're gonna be able to zero in? Okay. Seeing none, I think we are good to go. Lead us off, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. So, to give a brief background on the housing element process, Menlo Park's general plan was last updated in 2016 through the Connect Menlo process, and in the spring of 2021, the city started work on the housing element update project to update the general plan housing element for the planning period from 2023 to 2031, which we also call the sixth cycle, and to create opportunities for nearly 3,000 new housing units across the city to meet our regional housing needs allocation, which we also have an acronym for called RENA. Accounting for the above moderate income units already in the city's pipeline, the city needs to plan for about 1,500 new affordable units. Another key aspect of the housing element is updating the goals and policies and programs in that element to preserve, improve, and develop housing for all income categories and affirmatively further fair housing throughout the community. The city is also updating its required general plan safety element and preparing a new environmental justice element, and so collectively with the housing element, these three elements make up what we call the housing element update project. The city is studying the potential for 4,000 new, net new residential units to provide the 1,500 affordable units that are required, and that would happen through a mix of different development types, 100% affordable projects, market rate housing with required BMR component, and developments that would have a mix of affordability levels as well. At past Planning Commission meetings, staff stated that the goal was to implement the zoning at the same time as adoption of the housing element, but we received direction from council in December that the zoning piece of the housing element should be on a separate track, and it will be now implemented within one year of the housing element adoption. So, you can think of the adoption of the housing element as setting a framework of future actions, but the details around how the zoning changes are developed and enacted will be part of future discussions by the Planning Commission and city council in the coming months. So, some of the key programs in the housing element around the zoning that would be implemented throughout the next year would be Program H4D, which would increase density bonuses in the affordable housing overlay to allow development of 100% affordable housing at 100 dwelling units per acre. There would be some rezoning of commercial sites to allow residential and/or mixed-use development to occur on those sites, and removal of the minimum lot size to achieve 30 dwelling units per acre on our three lots around the downtown area. Finally, we would be increasing the densities in the specific plan area and removing the residential cap there of 680 units. So, this is a map of the opportunity sites that have been identified. You can see in yellow, there are a total of 69 sites throughout the city, primarily in council districts two through five, and these are primarily sites that meet HCD criteria, including a size between a half an acre and 10 acres. They tend to be located near transit or within a short distance of destinations like retail, personal services, grocery stores, things of that nature, and they help affirmatively further fair housing by providing new residential development opportunities throughout the community and not in any one particular area. So, I will turn it over now to Luke Evans from ESA, and that is the city's environmental consultant for this project, and he can walk us through the final SEIR findings. And Luke, when you... Just let me know when you want me to advance the slide for you.
Go ahead, Tom. Hi, everyone, I'm Luke Evans with Environmental Science Associates, or ESA. I'm the project manager for preparation of the supplemental EIR, and we've been working on this for about two years, and we're really happy to be at this point. So, I'm just gonna walk you through real quickly the SEIR process and some of the principal findings we had and some of the comments we had from members of the public. Tom, go ahead, next slide, please. So, we prepared the subsequent EIR, and it tears from... It doesn't tear from, but it kind of is associated with the... With the Connect Menlo EIR that was done in 2016, and as many of you know, Connect Menlo focused primarily on the Bayfront area, and this focuses on other parts of the city where housing opportunities exist. Next slide, please. So, here's where we are in the process. This is what we've done. Everything green is we can... We can call that checked off the list. We published the NOP, we had a scoping session, we had... We published a draft supplemental EIR. We had a comment session before the Planning Commission back in November, and then the comment period ended, and we have... We received a number of comments, which I'll go through shortly. And then, we also responded to those comments and a published document that was released on January 3rd, just about a week ago. And next, we have the final certification hearings, which is, this is the first. So, here we are, go ahead, Tom. These are the issues we looked at in the draft supplemental environmental impact report. These are your typical, typical issues. We really didn't exclude any of the standard sequel issues, except those that clearly did not apply to the city, such as agricultural resources and mineral resources, or at least didn't apply to these particular sites that were under investigation. So, we looked at all these, there's, you know, 15 or so, and we reached conclusions on the level of impact for each of these. Tom, next slide. So, here's the principal findings, and this is really quick, I recognize that, and we can talk about this some more if you all have specific questions about any of these particular... So here's the principal findings, and this is really quick. I recognize that. We can talk about this some more if you all have specific questions about any of these particular topics. We found that the impacts would be less than significant for pretty much all of the issues, or they could be mitigated to a less than significant level for pretty much all the issues, with the exception of these four, or actually three. Air quality, we found there could be some emissions exceedances with larger projects. We felt like there was certainly mitigations that could be used to lessen those, but we could not state with certainty that with some of the larger projects, there couldn't occasionally be some exceedances to criteria pollutant emissions. This was very conservative finding. For cultural resources, we were focused mainly on the built environment, in other words, historic buildings. And we recognize that as part of the development of some of these parcels, there may be buildings that could be recognized as historical, and they may be demolished or lost. Again, this is a conservative finding. Now, I don't think anybody is, is proposing demolishing any historic structures, but just in case, we figured we'd better just say that it's a possibility. Couldn't guarantee that it might, that it wouldn't happen. On the transportation front, there were two issues. And one of those was that the required upgrades to the non-motorized vehicle transportation system, in other words pedestrians, pedestrian facilities like sidewalks, things like that, and bicycle facilities might not occur because there might not be an established nexus, and there is no identified funding for those types of projects. Again, conservative finding, and this was consistent with the same finding that was in the Connect Menlo EIR back in 2016. For transportation, this is kind of similar to air quality. We found that some residential projects could exceed adopted guidelines for reductions in vehicle miles traveled. Now, we'll talk about vehicle miles traveled in a minute. Usually it's just, it's abbreviated as VMT. This was for, for projects that, that we felt like perhaps some of the mitigations that we proposed would not be sufficient to reduce the level of VMT to, to below the levels of regional goals. Again, a conservative, conservative finding. For the most part, the sites that are proposed are within areas that already demonstrate low vehicle miles traveled. In other words, there's not a lot of vehicle travelers associated with them. And, but there are some, some areas that are a little bit further afield that may have some VMT challenges and may generate a little bit higher levels of VMT. So we went ahead and just said, just in case, this is potentially a significant unavoidable impact. Go ahead, Tom. We looked at two alternatives. The first one is the no-product alternative, which is required by CEQA. It's not really an option for the city. It's not legally feasible for you all not to adopt a housing element update. But nevertheless, we evaluated that, and as a result, there would be some significant impacts associated with that. Not taking any action, the least of which would be that you would not be consistent with state housing law, among other things. The other alternative we looked at was the low VMT area alternative. Alternatives are primarily directed toward finding alternatives to a project that could reduce impacts that have been identified as significant and unavoidable. And in the last slide, we talked about VMT as being a potentially significant impact for some projects. So what we, what we did was we created an alternative where we put all of the housing opportunity sites and all of the development, mainly in the downtown corridor, the El Comino Real corridor, near the Caltrain station, et cetera, where we know there's already low VMT, where people have access to transit, where they have ways to get where they need to go without jumping in their cars and putting miles on the road. So we looked at that, and we did determine that that was the environmentally superior alternative, and because it would reduce the VMT impact. But we also acknowledge that it, that it would also increase impacts associated with aesthetics, for instance, because you'd be building taller buildings, you'd be higher density, et cetera. There could be some other air quality impacts, other things like that. There could be more, maybe not necessarily significant, but they could be, they would be greater under this alternative. Next slide, please, Tom. So during the draft SEIR public comment period, we received, oh, about 25, 24, 25 different comments. Some of them were the comments, multiple comments submitted by the same person or the same organization. Two comments received from agencies, SFPUC had a comment about their facilities, wanting to make sure that their, their pipelines, et cetera, were not encroached upon. Ravenswood Community School District specifically asked that one of their sites be included on the site opportunity list. We also received comments from 10 organizations, most of those advocating housing advocate folks, and also a couple of environmental organizations. And then we received 11 comment letters from 11 individuals with varying, varying inputs on the, on the EIR. And I'm going to go through what the primary comments were in just a second. But just want to talk about what, what we have in front of you tonight. One of the things you have in front of you tonight is the final SEIR. And what you're tasked with is, is recommending to the City Council that they certify that EIR. The final EIR is comprised of four different major pieces. First is the draft SEIR, which was circulated in November and December, which has been out, was out for 45 days. And people have got the opportunity to comment. Second is the response to comments document, where we actually recorded all those comments and then, and then responded to them as, as needed. Any revisions to the draft EIR? You know, it is a draft, and it is intended to be potentially modified slightly based on public comments or staff changes, anything else that might come up. And then lastly, is the mitigation monitoring reporting program, MMRP, which I'll talk about in a second. And together, all three, all four of these things constitute the final SEIR. Next slide, Tom. So this is just a very quick summary of the principal comments you received. This is all part of your packet. You all have the final EIR to look at if you want to look at any of these comments. We had some comments that were actually CEQA issues, and we had some that were not CEQA issues. And I'll talk about the difference of that. The CEQA issues were we had people concerned about the aesthetic impacts of densifying and higher density, in other words, taller buildings. We had concerns about impacts to biological resources, mainly this had to do with birds and trees from the two letters we did receive on this issue. Taller buildings, more glass, birds colliding with those buildings. People wanted to know how the, how the housing element update would affect that, would, would it create more impacts related to that? We had some questions about how we dealt with population and growth and how we projected those things. And the upshot, the answer to that is we were very conservative. We, we tended to err on the side of more when we talked about potential population growth from the housing element update and, and the effects of that. We felt like it was better to be conservative than it was to underestimate what the effects could be. Impacts to recreational facilities, in other words, parks. Are there enough parks in the city? Are there enough acreage? Is there, are there enough acres of parks and facilities to, to meet the needs of a growing population? We had comments about vehicle miles traveled. And we also had comments about water supply, if there was sufficient water to serve the additional population that would be made possible by implementation of the HEU. We also received another, a number of comments that were not CEQA related. This is not uncommon. We get comments across the board, and not all of them are environmental. And the difference here is the CEQA issues list reflects issues and questions that are related to specific impacts on the environment. These non-CEQA issues are not. We had some folks who requested that sites be added. Maybe they were property owners who wanted their sites added to the, to the housing opportunity list. We had a property owner who wanted their site removed from the opportunity list. We had a number of comments from folks who wanted higher densities and more affordability opportunities. And these, these first three on this list are really people's opinion and people's preference for, for the housing element update. Recognizing that the draft EIR analyzed the housing element update as it was proposed, not as people would like it. So these are more policy questions than they are environmental questions. The last one here, traffic congestion and parking, people had concerns about that, not surprising. That is not really a CEQA issue any longer. As of about three or four years ago, that is, these are not impacts that these agencies may consider. Under CEQA, all transportation impacts generally, when I say all, I'll put that in quotes, but pretty much all impacts are to be considered within the context of vehicle miles traveled. And that's what the EIR looked at, who looked at vehicle miles traveled, did not look at traffic congestion, circulation, traffic operations, and parking. Next slide, please. So this is the final slide. This is what's next for CEQA. I know you have other things to consider, but from this, on the CEQA front of things, this is, this is, this is what's before you tonight. You need to recommend, you would recommend certification of the final EIR to the City Council. You would verify that the final EIR meets the requirements of CEQA. You would concur with the CEQA findings. These are in your packet. You would recommend adoption of a statement of overriding considerations for those impacts that were found in the draft EIR to be significant and unavoidable. Once again, air quality, the cultural resources and transportation-related pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure and VMT. And you would discuss the reasons why you would recommend the issuance of a statement of overriding consideration for these three bullet points that are here. You would achieve compliance with state law. You would plan for a community in sustainable, healthy, and balanced way. You would also adopt a safety element and a new environmental justice element. These are the benefits of the project that would potentially outweigh those significant impacts that we just talked about. Finally, you'd recommend adoption of the mitigation monitoring reporting plan, which is really the city's commitment to minimizing the environmental impacts, impacts that were identified in the EIR. So that's really what's in front of you tonight. Your recommendation would go to the City Council, and then the City Council would actually adopt, would certify the EIR, adopt the statement of overriding considerations and mitigate mitigation monitoring reporting plan and adopt the CEQA findings. So that's the end of my presentation. Tom, if you want to take over, if anybody has any questions with me, I'm here. I can take questions now or later, whenever you'd like.
Through the chair, if I may, I'll continue on, just give you a brief overview of changes that we've made to the housing element itself, and then save all the discussion for after that. Okay, thank you. So I won't go through this entire background, but there have been a number of meetings, outreach events that have happened since May 2021. I guess I'll point out a few important points, which would be on October 4th of 2021, the Planning Commission and Housing Commission had a meeting to review land use strategies at that time. The Housing Commission met on November 17th then and discussed those in more detail. Luke already covered some of these EIR-related items, so I won't go through those. But we did have a primary draft housing element that we circulated for public review in May of this year. And then a joint Planning Commission and Housing meeting to review that housing element in May. And then we submitted that, that draft housing element in July, July 25th of this year, and received a letter back from HCD with a list of requested revisions on October 21st. And so since that time, we've been preparing updates to address their, their requested revisions. And on January 6th, we released that final review draft housing element that's part of the packet with revisions to address all of the HCD comments. So HCD comments that we received on that primary draft housing element, they did indicate that it addresses many of the requirements of state law. But we did receive comments in the following topic areas, affirmatively furthering fair housing, or AFFH for short, the housing sites inventory and realistic capacity methodology, an analysis of constraints that would reduce housing development potentially in the community, and addressing programs with more specificity and concrete actions. So revisions that we made to the housing element, briefly chapters three, four, and five were updated to provide more narrative and data regarding AFFH concerns and describing the disparities between areas north and south of US 101. Chapter four was updated to include a table of fair housing issues and actions that the city will take to address those issues. And chapter five was updated to include responses to identified constraints. And many of those were, were then added as programs to be implemented through 2031. Chapter seven includes an update to HCD's realistic capacity methodology to estimate unit production for the housing element opportunity sites that were identified. And so in that, chapter seven, site capacity is set as the acreage of the site times the density that would be permitted. And then there's a total adjustment factor that, that was used. And this is based on direction that HCD provides on, on how to perform this methodology. And so at a very high level, there are five different areas. So there's land use controls, which are sort of, how much of the site can you develop, considering setbacks, easements, things like that? And so for the specific plan area and elsewhere in the city, we set that at 95%. Realistic capacity is a, is another adjustment factor that was used. And that's looking at, actually, the next two, realistic capacity and typical densities are looking at sort of, what are we getting on those, on similar sites? What, what have we seen in, in housing developments in the city and in the broader county and area around us? So those have been set at between 80 and 95%, depending on the part of the city that we're talking about. And then the final two are infrastructure availability and environmental constraints. And so for all of the sites, looking at the availability of infrastructure and then concerns regarding environmental hazards that may exist on those sites, those could all be addressed. Either there were, were not any constraints, or they could be remediated. So those were set at 100%. And multiplying all of these five together, you get a, in the specific plan area, it's a little bit different. You get an adjustment factor of 68.4%. And elsewhere in the city, we got an adjustment factor of 81.2%. So that does bump down. It's a little bit more conservative way to estimate the potential site capacity, the, the number of units that could be achieved on these opportunity sites. The city is also able to apply proposed density increases from the updated affordable housing overlay to the, the unit capacity for the sites. And so with those changes in the methodology, it actually increases the total affordable units from 2,108 to 2,834 potential units. We also updated some key housing element programs in response to feedback that we received from the commissions, the City Council, and comments on the housing element drafts. We made a number of changes and that we specified some actions that the city will evaluate and undertake during the upcoming eight-year housing element cycle. And so just a few highlights there are program H2E, which is the anti-displacement strategy. It includes additional specific measures to be considered, including funding for the Menlo Park Housing Assistance Program beyond 2024 for lower-income tenants and homeowners facing displacement for reasons that are not addressed by the tenant relocation assistance ordinance or the pandemic. There would be expansion, exploring expansion of just cause eviction policies above current state law for tenants of any tenure, increasing the length of rent location, relocation assistance availability, and the development of a tenants' rights education program. Program H4 is, would amend the city's BMR housing regulations to consider increasing BMR requirements with a greater percentage of BMR units required for larger projects. And then program H4E would streamline project review by allowing ministerial review of 100% affordable housing projects, eliminating a use permit requirement for multifamily housing in the R3, R3A, and R4 zoning districts, and developing procedures for review of SB 35 applications if the city should become subject to that state law in the future. Program H4G would consider the downtown parking lots for housing. And we set some more specific dates there with a feasibility study in 2024, an RFP in 2025, and targeted completion of entitlements in 2026 with the development of 345 or more affordable units by the end of 2028. And there are a number of other programs that have been updated and are described in more detail in the staff report, and then also in the redlined copy of the housing element that was included in the staff report packet. So I'm wrapping up here with a few upcoming milestones. City Council will be meeting on January 31st to consider the recommendations of the City council will be meeting on January 31st to consider the recommendations of the housing commission and planning commission in certifying the SEIR and housing element. And then on February 9th and 10th, we're planning to hold in-person community meetings on the environmental justice and safety elements at the Bellhaven Branch Library. And the meeting on 9th will be conducted in English. The meeting on the 10th will be conducted in Spanish. And um, as previously mentioned, council directed staff to continue working on the environmental justice and safety elements and the zoning implementation for the housing element on a separate track from the housing element adoption. So staff will continue to perform outreach and revise and expand on those um, other items for future action by planning commission and council during the coming months. So finally, I would just um, encourage anyone who's listening to remain engaged in the process. Staff will continue to provide updates on um, the various elements of the housing element update project on the city's webpage at menlopark.gov/housingelement. And that is what I have for you. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you, Mr. Evans. Thank you to the um, many staff people who are behind putting this all together, uh, originally on these revisions. Appreciate all of your effort and work. Uh, we're going to move to public comment in just a minute. But if any commissioner has a specific clarifying question, um, based on the presentation from Mr. Smith or Mr. Evans, um, that is pressing before we hear public comment, um, you'll have the opportunity when we come back after public comment to ask either Mr. Evans, Mr. Smith or other staff questions. But before moving to public comment, any commissioners have a pressing question? All right, with that, Mr. Turner, let's move to public comment. I want to be clear that there are going to be three actions tonight. The, the planning commission will act on the uh, CEQA uh, focused elements here, the SEIR. The housing commission will make its recommendation on the housing element. And then the planning commission will make its recommendation on the housing element. But we are going to have one public comment period this evening, so that's this period. Uh, we will go ahead and use the full three minutes uh, for participants, given that they may want to focus on multiple elements here. Uh, and with that clarification, let me turn it to Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. As a reminder, under public comment, each speaker may address the planning commission and housing commission once for a limited three minutes. You do not, you are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. If you are participating via Zoom, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in, please click star nine on your phone. If you have multiple speakers on the same account, please let us know at the beginning of your comment and we will make sure each speaker has an opportunity to speak for three minutes. If you are participating in person today, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. And we do have a couple of comment cards, so I think I'm going to start with um, the in-person commenters, which will give online participants an opportunity to raise their hand. So we will begin with Lynn Bramlett.
So uh, good evening commissioners. First, I want to thank you for your very time-consuming service to our city. And those lengthy documents are uh, very time-consuming. So I'm here to comment on the general process and kind of tearing off, if you will, a statement in the staff report uh, about continuing to work the safety and environmental justice elements following. So the whole process started out as more of the idea together. And you know, cer- I certainly noticed that it was almost exclusively focused on housing, but yet these other elements were there. And I kind of suspect maybe this was a staffing issue, though I don't know, and an opportunity to better involve the community. So it's too late now, uh, we're kind of underway in something. But I, I am concerned about the city's general planning process. And I, I have been advocating for the idea of a resident-led blue ribbon commission charged with examining it and, you know, doing findings and making a report. So first, I have to say I'm confused because I thought the safety element was supposed to be submitted in parallel with housing. So what would the state think about efforts to kind of submit a draft, knowing it's very draft and continuing that? So I asked rhetorically. And um, uh, you know, to me, this process started late and again, it's under-resourced. And yet you can't really evaluate because there are no real org charts. So you know, I'm not really sure who's involved, but it seems to me that, you know, more resources are needed. I also ask about the open space and conservation and the noise element. So the safety element draft notes at the very beginning, those are not going to be updated. At minimum, I asked then that the safety element be separated out into its own document to make it very clear that this is the only one being updated and then the original 2013 date can stay on the other ones. And then I want to ask your support, especially the planning commission, that you will recommend that the city council, that the city, we start to follow the state requirements, as I understand it, to annually submit reports for all elements of a general plan update. Cause I've noticed that the accountability loop often isn't here. And you know, I'm casting no aspersions, so I know the housing one we do. The state does not mandate compliance with the others, but it still is the law. And so I heard the law mentioned earlier by the good consultant, talking about the, the SEIR, I think is the acronym. But I, it seems to me this would be a really great thing to build into the process, that at least yearly update process. So thank you again, and I hope you don't have a too late evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Sudhi Tronson.
Good evening and thank you for giving me this opportunity. I have attended many of these meetings online and this is my first in-person meeting since COVID. So some of my comments are from my frustrations with the housing element um, process in general. I was a member of the outreach committee and I resigned in protest along with several of my, my other colleagues. And I'm still perplexed how the, even the revised version of the redline version of the housing element still paints the outreach very rosy, and it was not. And actually in the HCD letter back, many of the comments that myself and my colleagues on this outreach committee had pointed out as the problems with the process were also captured in the HCD. So I would urge the city to take the volunteers' input and the time that we are spending without pay, uh, because we love our city and our neighbors more seriously. I also want to echo what Lynn mentioned, which is it seems the processes are a little bit too tight and backwards in that we are getting these comments at a very late last minute. I was also a member of the finance and audit committee and a chair at some point, and we had the same problem. Reports coming too late to act when the city has no option but to adopt. How can we adopt documents and policies when they are incomplete and a full comprehensive input has not been provided? One of the key reasons for not meeting the objectives of the fifth cycle has been identified in the revised document as giving the leadership or co-leadership from outside agencies. Yet we continue to do that, for example, in helping with the unhoused and people who have, um, you know, the insecure from res- perspective of the rent and so on. And we are saying we are going to partner with VA, great organization and institution, but that is combining leadership without any single identification of what is each party responsible for? What are the metrics, timelines and, you know, what is meant, the ownership? And that was also identified in the HCD letter as one of the problems. And the city is acknowledging that that is a problem, so I don't know why we are not correcting that. Uh, self-certification to me is a big problem. If the city is going to self-certify, that it's going to meet all of those requirements, we should be, be ready, getting ready for builder's remedy because it might not be compliant after it's been submitted and adopted. The handout or attachment G, by the way, is missing. That is supposed to outline, at least I didn't see, there was no link to a document for, that was supposed to be a table of how the city has ac- acknowledged or addressed the comments by uh, the residents throughout the process. Um, as to the, again, the supporting of our unhoused and the shortage of housing, we had a very extensive uh, su- study in 2020 that identified several recommendations and none of them have been adopted, including addressing short-term um, housing. I will be submitting a detailed um, input, just like I did for the housing element later inviting, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will move on to our Zoom participants. Our first speaker will be Karen Grove. Karen, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Thanks. Um, good evening. I'm Karen Grove, the president of Menlo Park. And I wanted to say that I appreciate the changes that have been made to the anti-displacement program to make it more specific and to accelerate the outcomes. Um, I was a little distressed to hear explore um, in the description tonight because my understanding is that the council directed um, that those programs just cause for eviction and increasing tenant relocation payments and housing fund and outreach um, should be added. And of course, they have to be, you know, crafted. But explore to me sounded like maybe we'll do it, maybe we won't. Um, I hope the intention is to do those programs and have them implemented by 2024 um, so that our community can be stabilized and we can keep um, the diversity that we have. Um, and also it's important um, to the state because it is a really crucial aspect of affirmatively furthering fair housing. Um, we've lost a huge amount of our community of color to displacement. Um, so we need to reverse that. Um, another aspect of affirmatively furthering fair housing is that we produce extremely low, very low and low income housing and including for people with special needs in high resource areas. And I know that we've made efforts in this housing element, but I, I am worried that it, we're falling short. And so it is very late to make changes. But what we can do is as a city, make a commitment that for those very, very high opportunity sites, like the Flood School site, where we know there's a project in the works for the city-owned parking lots, which are the most ideal because we control the land for affordable housing and for the one acre carve-out that may be available on the SRI property, that when developers and, and architects and such need help from the city on those sites, that we respond as a super high priority, that we streamline in any way we can. And that for the city parking lots, we put like a super superstar project manager on that project and we execute flawlessly. Um, but that is our best potential to house low-income people in our high opportunity center of the city. And I just, I'm looking forward to us doing an excellent job and seeing the results. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Jenny Michelle. Jenny, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Dear all, my name is Jenny Michelle from the Common Place neighborhood block, longtime resident on Willa Road next to the VA, VA hospital and by trade, a commercial property manager. My gratitude to this diocese council and to staff. You are listening to us and are tasked with generating miracles or milagros. Thank you. Item E1, did I hear that no specific cultural, historical resources that you know of are in place? Did I miss this? And that needs to be immediately amended. We live on known native lands. Recently, I was admitted into the hospital. They asked me if I felt safe at home. I shake my head, knowing that if you would ask me that question in previous decades, I would answer, I was unsafe at home. But I would have lied because I knew there was nowhere for me to go. I had to live with my abusive boyfriend. I had no credit, no money, and barely able to make ends meet with my several jobs. I'm concerned about domestic abuse being underreported. I'm concerned that I am not the only one who would lie about being safe because I knew it would be safer than sleeping on the streets. It has been a long pandemic. What is the city doing to outreach those of us hiding in plain sight who need help? We must, one, increase protections for renters to discourage any type of displacement. The commitment needs to be that you're a resident here, you can stay a resident here. We will collectively come forward for you. Two, expedite the plan to produce 100% affordable housing on city-owned parking lots downtown. Three, overlay doesn't hold as much water as just changing the zoning. Change the zoning to increase height for housing complex, complexes, especially on our transit corridors, increasing our housing product types like studios, mobile homes, parking overnight for workers, and those of us with failing relationships can exit safely into a unit without enduring lifelong trauma. Four, based on the level of services, oops, that we each consume relative to other people in the region, as per the New York Times article, "The Climate Impact of Your Neighborhood Maped", New York Times dated 12/13/2022, we generate quadruple the service demand and therefore should really hold ourselves to a higher load standard. I'm very concerned and alarmed that our emphasis on ADU production, District 5 currently is 5,000 a month for a one-bedroom. Of the 36 ADUs developed in, oh shoot, I'm running out of time. Anyway, we're asserting too many 120% ADMI u- AMI units. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Misha Sillen. Misha, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Good evening. Planning Commission, Housing Commission, thank you for taking my comment. And thank you to the commission members and to staff for all of your work on the housing element process. I know it's been long and uh, there's been a lot going on. So um, I am a resident of Menlo Park. I live in the Allied Arts neighborhood and I've been following the housing element process for about a year now, maybe more. Um, and I've made numerous comments uh, about the fact that I think our element is sort of trying to check boxes and meet some of the state requirements on paper without actually committing to things that I think will realistically produce housing. So now that we're really close to, you know, the adoption point, um, I just have to say, I think some changes have been made that are really encouraging, uh, specifically in the program section. Uh, as far as the list of sites, however, I'm still disappointed and, and slightly embarrassed that, of what we have. Um, I think that we're not quite in, you know, mountain lion woodside territory, but we do have some stuff that just doesn't pass muster. Um, specifically, we're saying that every site, uh, we know with the recent changes, we're saying that every site is going to use the density bonus that you can get if you're building 100% affordable housing. Um, I don't believe we have any historical evidence to support that. We're also saying that there's going to be a lot of housing built on commercial sites with current use. Um, of course, we're all familiar with Sand Hill sites. Um, and with those in particular, there's even in the public record, um, there's a conversation between the planner and the developer divco where they say they're not interested in building housing. The Menlo Park uh, staff member asked them to send an email with formal letterhead confirming this. They sent the email with formal letterhead confirming this. The sites are still included and for example, site number four is one of those sites, the Quadra Site. We're saying we're going to build 89 units of housing, affordable housing, where there's currently an office building with, you know, very wealthy venture capitalist firms. So at this point, I just have to say, I think we need to be honest and really try to produce a list of sites and capacities that are realistic. Um, and uh, that's what I would like to see from the city and from staff at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Pam Jones. Pam, you should be able to um, unmute yourself now.
Good evening, housing commissioners, planning commissioners and staff. Pam Jones, resident of Menlo Park, on the Belle Haven neighborhood. I have a couple of questions and I have a comment. I'm going to try and get out. I want to commend the staff for the timely turnaround of the document and inclusion of recommendations for residents, housing organizations, and of course, the HCD. In early 2020, we were looking at the city participating in the GARE program, the Government Alliance on Race Inequality, which is part of, from the Office of Health and Planning in the county. And then, of course, COVID came along. But my recommendation now is that we do include a statement that in the housing element that we're committed to education, to develop a sense of, a lens of equity. And I sent a letter which includes a comment from the handbook, the furthering firm Fair Housing Handbook. My two questions... oh, the second thing is to recommend that this item be placed on the council's 2022-2023 work plan, or 2023-2024. Question: What is the effective date for the repeal of the 2015-2023 housing element? When will the 2023-2031 housing element go into effect? What happens if our 2023-2031 housing element is not accepted by the CDC? Second question is, what is the relationship between the housing element and the environmental justice element? And what impact does the environmental justice element have on the housing element? And how will it be implemented? Again, thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Brittany Baxter. Brittany, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hi, good evening. I'm Brittany Baxter, a D3 resident. Thank you so much to commissioners and staff for all of the work that went in to get us to this point. I know it's a massive project. And apologies in advance, my internet has been a little shaky today. But just wanted to say thank you for looking into the anti-displacement and tenant protection measures. I think it's especially important, given that some of the sites on the list are multifamily sites. So just thinking about people who are living there today. They're already here in the community, working with kids in schools, things like that. So don't want to risk losing them if those property owners do choose redevelopment. Sorry, redevelop. I think it would be great if there's a way to figure out how to let people return to those units, if that's an option. I also think it's especially important with the environmental justice element coming up, knowing that there will be a lot of improvements that landlords or other groups might want to make to buildings. I think we've definitely seen the importance of creating those climate-resilient, climate-friendly buildings, especially with the recent weather. But again, just want to make sure that whether it's due to construction or upgrades to buildings or things like that, that again, the changes aren't displacing people that are already here since it could already be so tough to hang on in the area. Also, just looking at the site list, so I know a lot of them are mixed-use or existing office. I know many of us are aware of how empty offices are these days. I certainly see a lot of empty space around the city myself. So just again, kind of thinking about ways that we can incentivize that to turn over to housing, actually convert some of that office even to housing. I think there's a lot of complications with doing that in general. But given the smaller footprint that we have in Menlo Park, I am interested in how that could play out locally. So anything we could do just for that creation? And then finally, just wanted to support the policies that are in service of creating more vibrancy downtown. I think that mixed-use model can work really well. Great to have more foot traffic and support for local businesses, have people be walking distance to transit and other amenities. And that's it for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Catherine. Catherine, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Good evening. This is Catherine Dumont, D3 resident. As a renter and someone who has experienced housing displacement, I truly appreciate the inclusion of stronger tenant protection programs and their accelerated timelines. My thanks to city council and staff for their work in this area. Someone who grew up in a working-class family, I remember a time in the Bay Area when people could afford to live near where they worked. I'm concerned that our 2023-2031 housing element does not go far enough to address the housing shortage, particularly in the equitable distribution of affordable housing. And one of those people in favor of increasing the density and type of housing, especially affordable housing, and especially in high-resource areas like our downtown. People should be able to live, work, and shop without getting into their cars. For a more inclusive and diverse community and for a more environmentally responsible community, we need to build up. We can still have our aesthetics, but we need more height. And some, I think we can have a more livable, walkable, and viable community, especially with greater housing opportunities downtown and in other high-resource areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Michael. Michael, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hello, my name is Michael. I'm a resident of downtown Menlo Park. Major thanks to everyone who's been involved with the process so far. I primarily just want to echo prior comments that have been made on rezoning of downtown. As a resident of downtown and someone who walks past downtown or through downtown while walking my dog basically every single day, I would absolutely love to see a more vibrant downtown that is not afraid of building taller buildings. I would love to see a taller height limit. I think doing so would dramatically increase the number of affordable homes we can build. It would go a long way towards improving the housing shortage. But I also just think it would make for better downtown. I think increasing the density just increases the viability of a lot of small businesses, foot traffic and density of customers around. Just, I think it helps. And I have noticed while walking around downtown that a lot of businesses have started to close recently, and more density could go a long way towards helping reverse that situation. Other than that, I think that rezoning and increasing the height limit in a way that is relatively simple, like not with too complex rules, increases the likelihood that developers will actually want to build more housing near downtown. And I think that that's really important. So again, thanks to the council and Housing Commission and Planning Commission for... they're involved in Planning Commission, and thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Skylar Spear. Skylar, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hello, my name is Skylar Spear. I work with Public Advocates, a legal organization that has an extensive history of working with Menlo Park on equitable development plans. I do want to say thank you for your time revising the housing element. I know it's a big task. I don't have extensive additions to comments that have already been made. I just want to highlight and emphasize a few that folks have already made. First, we hugely appreciate the inclusion of stronger tenant protections in the revised draft. And also, we believe a firm commitment to expanded just cause eviction protections rather than a promise to explore those protections is a really important part of affirmatively furthering fair housing. And second, we also really encourage a robust strategy for developing the city-owned parking lots, similar to what Karen Grove outlined. Third, we believe public accountability is a really important part of housing element law, and I agree that expanded public participation and public process has been warranted. And finally, we share concerns about your current site selection and the feasibility of some of those sites developing, and encourage you to think about what some of those sites are and whether there are more feasible sites to use. We encourage you to revisit your sites and some of the programs I've mentioned. That's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's the last of the raised hands that I see, but maybe give it a minute. If you do have a public comment, please click that raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. There are still no public commentators at this time.
Let's give it just a couple more seconds. This is our one and only public comment period this evening, so I want to make sure that anybody that was considering a comment has an opportunity. And so this will be the moment. I take it, Mr. Turner, I have failed in my effort to do marketing for public comment?
There are no more hands raised at this time.
All right. We'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the real and virtual dais. So we're at a moment now, I just want to check in with commissioners. Commissioner Wen, I see your hand up. I'll get to you in a second. The first thing that we have to act on is the Planning Commission on the SEQA-focused elements here. My recommendation is that to the Planning Commission that we hang on a second and we'll move to that. But I want to allow especially anybody who has any follow-up question or any point you want to make right now because it has come from the presentation or public comment, especially in Housing Commission, if it's a point you're going to lose later on, by all means, take a moment and do that. But in a minute, I want to focus on getting focused on the SEQA documents because then when we move to the housing element, both commissions are essentially looking at the same thing. So with that, Commissioner Wen.
Good evening. I want to thank you so much for the staff and the housing element to put together such a wonderful presentation tonight. I am very pleased to see that the the option of the parking lot, city-owned parking lot, is on the... it's on the... it's part of this presentation because I have been advocating for this since I ran for city council two years ago. That was my cornerstone focus, was having the city-owned parking lot turned into a mixed housing project. It would solve several issues, of course. The parking, we do underground parking, and we have parking issues there. And to make it free for the workers, many of them are low-income and they cannot afford to run out every three hours, two hours, to move their cars so they won't get a ticket. And to create vibrancy to the city because I know there were issues that there were not enough. We shut down the city early in the evening because there's not a lot of foot traffic. And we are actually right across from the train station and the bus depot. And I just, and I thought that that one particular area would not be opposed by any neighbors because there wouldn't be any local neighbors to oppose to, just mostly businesses. And I'm pleased to see that it's on the agenda, but I'm not happy to see that it's not going to be focused on until 2024, 2025. And I'm just wondering, is there any way to expedite this? Because of all the options you have put forward, the city-owned parking lot that I have been advocating for all these years is the best option. So I'm not sure, I know we are getting to the end here, but I had mentioned this at one of the meetings in 2022 about this, to add this as part of the option, and I'm glad to see that it's part of the option. But it's just not fast enough. And I'm just wondering if there's any way to rezone that, those parking lots and to expedite matter because if we have the city-owned parking lot, we don't have to pay. We don't have to pay. We can choose our own developers. It'd be a lot cheaper for us than to use SRI geolockers to survey areas where those developers bought those property and we pretty much have to try to work with them this way with the city-owned parking lot. We have full control because it's our land. And it would solve so many, so many issues, parking issues, traffic issues. You know, we can have more because there's so much space. There's so much wasted space in the parking lot that we can have. We can build up to four levels plus underground parking and make it free for everybody and it'd be a great, vibrant place. So I'm just wondering, I want to put it out there to see if there's any way we can expedite this particular one on the agenda and not leave it to 2024, 2025. I'm not sure where we are now and if that's not even a viable option anymore, but I was advocating for this one we met last year at some point on this city-owned parking. Thank you so much.
I think that is a question, Mr. Smith, about the city-owned parking downtown, especially in expediting and speeding that up.
Yes, we've certainly heard a lot of interest in this particular program, and we have worked to tighten the timeline as much as we can. I think one important thing to consider is that in the coming year, we will be modifying the zoning of those parking lot sites that would allow the development on top of that. And so that's really, the first piece is getting that density allowance, the height allowance, that in place first. And then, once we have that in place, then we can go through the process of outreach, the RFP, coming up with the strategies and development proposals to implement that on top. So if you want to think of the zoning piece as sort of that preliminary step that will be happening to set the framework for what could be developed there in the coming year.
If I may have a follow-up question, why can't it be done? I mean, I mentioned this in one of the meetings, I attended joint meetings we had. So I'm just wondering, why can't we have it? I mean, how difficult is it to get it rezoned? Like to have a meeting to have rezoned? I mean, how difficult is that? I mean, I don't know how that works, how the rezoning process works. How difficult, I mean, how can we expedite this instead of just saying, okay, we put it on the agenda and this will happen at some point, you know, 2024, 2025? I mean, I just find it just, this is just like, to me, I don't, I know you have put all those options up there, but it's like the best option that will provide the most number of units that is required for us and more, and more, more than 3,000. And I'm just wondering why it's... I know that's the preliminary step, but why isn't it being done simultaneously as we do all this stuff together, like putting this whole process together?
Yeah, it's certainly a challenge to balance all of the different programs that we're looking at over the eight-year housing element cycle. I think we do realize that this is a key priority to achieve affordable housing in the community. But going through the process of making sure that we have adequate engagement of the public input from the various commissions on the zoning portion, and we're not just talking about zoning of these sites, but really all of the specific planned area and making sure that there is the balance and that the different zoning regulations that we're going to be putting in place are all working together rather than sort of jumping to spotlight certain sites without consideration for the context around it as well. We do realize it's a priority, but it will take a little bit of time to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you, Commissioner Wen. Other housing commissioner questions that are top of mind for you right now before the Planning Commission turns to SEQA and then we'll turn to the Housing Commission to take the lead on the broader housing element? Okay, thank you to the Housing Commission. I appreciate you standing by for a minute. So we're going to turn now to the Planning Commission. And for the Planning Commission to focus on the first item, the first bullet essentially in the staff report, which is the elements related to SEQA, including the SEIR. We are making this as a recommendation to the city council. So with that, I'll turn to the Planning Commission for any questions or comments or discussion, and ultimately, we'll look for a motion. Who would like to begin? Commissioner Barnes.
Thank you for that. I got my whole little desktop going on over here.
So I have two, oh, I'm sorry. As it relates to the SEIR, I have a specific question, because I'm looking to understand a little bit more about, and allow me to pull this up here. There is a less-than-significant impact ascribed to the impact on parks facilities in the city. And I know that I had talked to this before in the context of, at our previous meeting, in the context of understanding ratios, right? What, with adding housing and therefore family units and people and consumers of park space, you know, what were the ratios and what were the linkages? We had seen earlier this evening a reference to park infrastructure having been brought up by one of the commenters. And what I want to get some clarification on is what is contained in the SEIR. And to be specific, it is on, pull this up here. So I am in section 4.13.2, environmental setting. And specifically within that, as I go down and read under the library parks and recreation facilities, I'll just read this out loud, because then I'll ask my question in a moment. It says, "The city's general plan policy, OSC-2.4, calls for maintaining a ratio of five acres of developed parkland per 1,000 residents. Currently Menlo Park has an estimated population," excuse me. "Currently Menlo Park has an estimated population of 36,715 people, 244 acres of parkland and open space for its residents. Using these values, Menlo Park has a ratio of 6.65 acres of parkland per 1,000 residents." So what this says is, the city's general plan calls out five acres per thousand. We, having 244 in Menlo Park writ large, have a ratio of 6.65 per 1,000. My question is, on a more granular level, we could have a lot of park in Sharon Heights, for instance, but not a lot in other parts of the city, say, for instance, in my neighborhood, the Willows. And I'm wanting to understand, when it was determined, the different findings in the SEIR, which cued off of the connect Menlo, that, that the implementation of the proposed project wouldn't result in a need for new or physically altered park facilities or other recreational facilities, and it calls out some other things as well, all of them having a less-than-significant impact, was, I want to understand the methodology a little bit better. Was it 6.65, because that was the ratio? And because of that, these different findings as it relates to park and recreational space being adequate, it's the large number, 6.65? Or was it done more granularly to at all look at different parts of the city where you could have, you know, recreational deserts? In other words, simply not having facilities available to residents? So that's, I'd like to understand a little bit more about that. And tell me if I'm understanding this correctly and how I should be understanding this. Thank you, that's my question.
Mr. Evans, please.
Yes, Commissioner, I can, I can, I can address that. The answer to your question, as we looked at this on a citywide basis, we did not look at it on a more granular level, as you described. We looked at just the aggregate number of acres available and then just adjusted that to numbers of acres per thousand people. And that's, that's pretty standard practice. So does that answer your question? What else, what else do you need to know?
Yes, that answers my question. I'm disappointed in the, in the result, but yes, the clarification is noted. Thank you very much for that. That's my question, as it relates to the SEIR. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Other Commissioners, comments or questions related to the SEIR? I have a couple. I'll go ahead while others are thinking in this mix. First of all, Mr. Evans, thanks for the presentation, thanks for the time. I think in, as you noted, where there was potential for impact in those four areas, that you were being very conservative. I just wanted to make a comment. I want to recognize one of the speakers focusing on tribal cultural resources. Note that that's a separate category from cultural resources that you've pulled out, which I think is essentially the buildings that are existing and in our community right now. The comment for me on this is that we will remember in planning around the issue of Feldman's bookstore, that we have zero overarching guidance in the city about historic preservation at all, at any level. And so the main concern I have is that we in no way start using the housing element and affordability in housing as the first time that we're ever going to start looking at this as a city. Now, I realize this isn't actually germane to the SEIR, but it is relevant to pulling from the SEIR at some point in the future here to try to prevent some affordable housing. Just to refresh everybody, we had conversations about whether Mrs. Stamford using a building for laundry in 1897 was a historic and significantly important thing to preserve. And that was at a Planning Commission meeting. So I would just say that if we're going to start paying attention to this as a city, that we shouldn't be pulling this from an SEIR around an affordability aspect of a housing element. We should actually pay attention to it as a city. So again, Mr. Evans, not really a question to you, but I just want to put the marker for interpretation of what's coming from this. I do have a question pertinent to the two transportation pieces. I think actually in the SEIR and in the staff report, my question to you is, it sounds like that if we actually implemented this housing element across the board, absent your point that there might be a specific project that could increase VMT, but across the board, looking citywide, that this actually reduces VMT over the baseline. Did I have that, do I have that right?
Well, yes. I mean, generally, if you did, if you did place more housing in these, in these lower VMT areas, you would have lower per capita VMT. And of course, there is a distinction here between per capita VMT and total VMT. Obviously, if you have more people driving, you're going to have more vehicle miles traveled. But the goal here is to reduce per capita VMT. That's the state's guidelines. In other words, you want individual people to be driving less. And if you do put housing in areas next to Caltrain, next to bus lines, next to other mass transit or next to services, people will have to get in their car to go shopping, et cetera, you will reduce VMT. There's, there's loads of evidence to suggest that. So generally speaking, yes, your, your conclusion is correct.
Thank you for that. Again, I just want to put a marker for us at Planning Commission. We rarely see a project that actually reduces the average VMT. We're always looking at an impact that is essentially around increasing the average VMT in this mix. And so I think it's fabulous that we're trying to address affordability and we're also going to get an environmental benefit in this as a community. It's terrific. And the last comment, again, this is not relevant to the IR, but into the utilization of the IR. I'll just point out that if we actually got our act together and did better bike ped, had invested in it for a long time, actually had reasonable east-west connection across the city, that we wouldn't actually have these negative impacts with our transportation, with any of our work here, because we would have the right infrastructure that would encourage folks to be able to use something other than their cars. So I just think that this SEIR is fantastic. I think it says that we should absolutely proceed with everything we can do for affordability and housing in our city. And I think it puts a marker in place that if we actually do some stuff, it would be better for our entire community. It would help people who could get around better, could have more affordability, and we have a better environment out of this. So I am ready to move for approval as submitted, but I do not want to jump any other Commissioners with comments or questions. Commissioner Barnes.
Thank you. Mine is related, thank you for that, Chair. I have a question through the Chair to the consultant. And it is in relation to the financial analysis, the FIA, for the project and the fiscal analysis, impact analysis. On page 13 of the fiscal impact analysis, it talks to shortfalls in different areas, whether it's a shortfall as it relates to the city, for the general fund, or for the different school districts. I'm curious how this works in your experience in housing elements, fiscal shortfalls. It's going to ask you to editorialize a little bit, but do you see the, what's the extent to which you see these? What's the magnitude to which you see these? And, you know, how often or how are these shortfalls made up in your experience? If you could talk to any of those topics, through the Chair, to the, I think to the consultants probably.
To the M group, is that where we are on this? Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Bradley, Metropolitan Planning Group, planning consultant on the housing element and other related elements, safety, environmental justice. I say that because I am not an economist or a fiscal analysis person, but this report was prepared under our, under our direction and supervision. So I'll speak to it from a planning perspective. Typically, when we do housing elements, we don't do a fiscal analysis, because there's no basis to do anything with these, with the information that results from it. Menlo Park has a long history of doing fiscal analysis on lots of different types of projects. So it's totally appropriate here, obviously, to have done this. But it's purely informational for the decision-makers, the Plan Commission, the Housing Commission, and the City Council. There's nothing, there's nothing actionable. And I can't really answer your question better, because of what I said earlier, we typically don't do these when we do a housing policy project plan such as this.
Thank you for that. And I'll just go through the Chair again, if it's permissible to staff, I guess, to Ms. Chow or whoever. I don't know if the question lands, but has there been any discussion on, great, you've got a housing element, you have net fiscal impacts, they very well, you know, given what they're for. This is a discussion of whether they're warranted or not, but how do these deficits usually get made up? And in previous housing elements, did we have deficits? And how were they looked at and were they made up? Is there any historical precedent or information you can provide, a lens with which to look at these net fiscal impacts?
Thank you, Chair. Our, thank you, Commissioner Barnes, Deanna Chow, Assistant Community Development Director. So it's a very good question. I think typically, as you've seen in other fiscal impact analyses for residential projects, they tend to lend, to have an impact on our fiscal resources here in the city and in other agencies as well. I think the one that we did in terms of a, I don't think we did one in the last housing element cycle, but probably more recently in terms of a broader advanced planning, long-range planning document, was during our housing element process. And that looked at overall changes in land use. And so you do see that balance, the residential increase offset by the commercial development that we do see. So whether it is through increases in property taxes, so when land sells, you know, there's a change in property tax, so that's an increase. We often see it through sales tax, so when we have commercial uses. So, you know, non-residential uses are important. And we've heard a lot about sort of the economic viability and revitalization of our downtown. So maintaining that commercial base is important. I think we also recognize, you know, the transit occupancy tax. So we've seen a few hotels that were developed as part of the Bayfront, as part of the land use mixes that the Planning Commission has recently seen. And that certainly, again, supports the economic advancement and offsets some of the balance, sort of the impacts that we see with residential developments and the resources that are needed to support the residences. So it's a big, it's sort of a bigger picture, you know, what is happening outside of this housing element? What is happening in our total land use?
Got it, okay. So, to risk a paraphrasing, because I can never state it as well as you did. In isolation, this is what it is in the broader scope of other flows of revenue streams throughout the city. On a larger scale, someone is contemplating how this looks overall for the city, but this is one piece of an overall puzzle. And there are ebbs and flows. This is, when we entitle a hospitality property, there is significant inflows by way of example from that. And obviously, this doesn't account for any of that. Okay, I appreciate that context for that question. Thank you, Chair.
Any further questions or comments, or ultimately looking for a motion? Vice Chair Harris.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. Actually, I would like to lift up what Chair DeCarty said regarding reducing the VMT. I think a lot of us have been preaching the reduction in traffic that occurs when we build housing close to transportation and services. So with that, I would be happy to make a motion to recommend the City Council to certify the subsequent environmental impact report, SEIR.
I would second that.
All right, so we have a motion from Vice Chair Harris. Commissioner, Commissioner Schindler.
Second.
Is a second on that? And that is essentially as submitted and recommended by staff in the staff report. So we have a first and a second. Before we move to a vote, any clarifying questions or further comment from any Commissioners? We're at Planning Commissioners here.
Can I, I'm sorry, this is Commissioner Nguyen. Can I make a recommendation to expedite the parking lot? I mean, I know I'm pushing, because I've been pushing for like two years, but the parking lot option, is there any way to make the motion to, to agree to the motion, but to, with that, and say, to set as a high priority? Is that possible?
Yes, it is. Let me, let me do a process check, Commissioner Nguyen. So there are three steps this evening. Step one is for the Planning Commission to act on the SEQA aspects of the housing element. That's what we're talking about now. When the Planning Commission is done with that, we'll turn toward the housing element itself. And there, in the staff report, they will be looking for both Commissions to make a resolution to repeal essentially the 2015 to 23 housing element of the general plan and adopt in its place the new text full of the housing element to the general plan. In that context, you all as housing will have the option to decide to do that or not. And if you do that, I don't imagine that you're going to recommend any amending, but you could give some guiding principles to the City Council that feel important to you as a housing commission. Then we, as the Planning Commission, would do the same thing. So I think to your question, Commissioner Nguyen, and for other housing and planning Commissioners, is to think about the point you want to make and to do it at, at one of those three elements in the program. But right now, we're on SEQA. And I think what you're talking about, Commissioner Nguyen, might be next, when we're looking for the Housing Commission to, to make its recommendation on the housing element. Does that work for you, Commissioner Nguyen?
Yeah, that's fine. I was just thinking, if I'm allowed to, you know, make a recommendation on top of, you know, what will be proposed in the next, next step.
Good, okay. We can, we'll, we'll turn to that and with you all on housing in just a moment. Thank you. Other Planning Commissioner questions? We have a first and a second. So the next thing we're doing is moving to a vote on this proposed resolution. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, just prior to the vote, I want to express that. I think I get to the methodology around the SEIR as it relates to recreational facilities. There's a customary way of doing it. We see it all the time. It's a state-handed-down methodology for, for doing an environmental impact report. I think when it was done in aggregate across the city, I think it deeply misrepresents the disparity in recreational space available throughout the city to different neighborhoods. So I think it's deeply flawed. And I would like for Council to be thoughtful about the linkage between recreational facilities, given the dearth of facilities available for adults, for children to recreate in organized or non-organized fashion. in organized or non-organized fashion. We see that. We see diabetes, prediabetes conditions, up 43% in school-aged children. And I can say that as a, as an adult who plays in sports leagues, it's very hard to book fields. For my son, who plays multiple sports, lacrosse and soccer being among them, it is very difficult to book fields in Menlo Park. The park in the Willows, I believe it's called the Willows Park. I believe it's on leased land from Ravenswood. For some reason, it's not entirely usable as a sports field based on the maintenance of it. So we have a dearth of recreational facilities. So this is not anti-housing. What it is, is a thoughtful, a desire to have a thoughtful process and linkages to facilities and population and demographics and build-outs. And I don't think that this report, which is supposed to do that, did that at all responsibly. So that's my, my comment prior to, prior to this vote and kind of signaling my thoughts on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Any other planning commission comments or points before we move to a vote? All right, with that, we will. This is on a vote to adopt, as per the staff report, resolution of all elements related to SEQA and the SEIR with the housing element, in alphabetical order, beginning with Commissioner Barnes.
No.
Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
I will vote yes as well. So that resolution passes with a vote of 5, 4, 1 against. And again, Commissioner Riggs is not here this evening. So with that, I'm going to close the first third of item E1, which is around SEQA. And we are now moving towards both commissions acting on the second aspect of this, which is a resolution around the draft housing element itself. First is the Housing Commission. And the way I intend to go here is not to preclude planning commission questions or comments in this because it's all related in the same direction, but would ask planning commissioners to defer for a moment because the Housing Commission actually has to reach its own conclusion about what it wants to do. Then after that, we'll pick up as a planning commission. So with that, as a process approach. Commissioner Tate, I see you have your hand up. Let me turn to you for your comment or question.
Yes, I'm having technical difficulties. So I need to cut my camera off, but I'm still here.
The technical difficulties actually look really cool, just so you know.
You can see it, huh?
Yeah, you kind of got a disco thing rolling.
Yeah, like a strobe light.
If you had a rave, it's working very well.
Exactly. So, yeah, so by all means, thanks for letting us know, Commissioner Tate. We will, we will, of course, recognize you, assume you're still here. And with your video off, you can still use your hand, I believe, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. All right, with that, I will defer to housing commissioners. And since I'm not with you often and don't chair your meetings, I'll try to do this with a light touch. But ultimately, you are headed toward a resolution around the housing element. Which commissioner would like to go first?
Commissioner? I'm happy, since I'm here, to start with a couple comments.
All right. Commissioner Merriman? Yep, just make sure that you can, they can hear you through the microphone.
I'll orient myself this way. Does that work? Well, I wanted to start by saying thank you to staff. This is a multi-year update. And there were a lot of new items that needed to be considered that meant it wasn't a copy, cut, and paste endeavor as it sometimes has been in the past. So thank you very much, and thank you for the presentation. And I may have missed some of this within all the documents, but I'm trying to kind of pull various threads together. Starting at a high level, I'm a professional that's, that deals and grapples with housing elements and still find that there is an institutional bias that is very deep in this, in the way that these are all presented. This is not the fault of staff, but it is very difficult, I think, even for myself, to pull some of these things together. And would ask, as you continue to move this forward with the council, that you strive to have a little bit of some context and continuing to break it down for folks to understand how the various appendices tie together to give you the answers that you'd need. Because you're flipping here, you're flipping here, you're going back and forth and back and forth. You all know this. It's part of how you go through the 1,200 pages. And it's just not that user-friendly. So not, not a direct criticism of you, but it just a reminder to, to the extent that we can make it a little easier to pull out what some of the comments that we've heard today are really about, what's at the heart of the matter. I think that would be helpful. Along those lines, I wanted to look. I think there's a question embedded in here. So the affordable housing overlay, I generally consider it to be pretty elegant. It allows for additional density in exchange for added public benefit, protects certain pieces of land because in the process of densifying it, you also make it more expensive, which often means it's hard for a nonprofit or any developer who's interested in not charging top dollar to go and get that relative to highest and best use. So continue to be in support of the way that the city engages with that and think of it as a best practice generally. My only question around it is really, when it comes down to it, is 100 units enough? 100 units an acre enough? I say that because I have professional experience developing small units for seniors. And you can go and look at it. It's next to the Peninsula JCC and the Foster City City Hall. It's four stories tall, which is not that imposing. And it's a half-acre project. And if you were to make it into a full acre and double the size, it would be 126 units an acre. So for smaller sites, and we've heard some ideas from comments today, permanent supportive housing, people exiting domestic violence who may be okay with a studio or one small-ish, one bedroom, et cetera. There's lots of reasons why we would want to consider that. And I thought in a previous draft, Ms. Chow, there was something that kind of spoke to this conversion of the FAR and allowed for some flexibility there. And is that, if, if I could just get some clarification, if that concept still exists? Or if there is even, given the EIR, SEIR, if there's still really any way to kind of look at that? It's an area that's generally at the very high level kind of falling short for me.
So a question of staff or consultant?
So I can start with an answer for that. So I think when we were developing the AHO in this proposed concept, we were looking at the state density bonus law, which allows up to 80 dwelling units per acre, and trying to find a way to incentivize above and beyond that. And in the Bayfront area, we've allowed up to 100 dwelling units per acre on sites there. And so with that context, in another part of the city, bringing that level of development elsewhere throughout seemed like a number that, that was a good approach when we were developing this. So I think that's a little bit of the context behind that. Sorry, was there a second part to the, the question after that?
Is there still some kind of a conversion between FAR and just the straight unit constraint of 100 units per acre? That was a concept we discussed early on, Ms. Chow. And I thought that it was innovative. And I like seeing that kind of a thing.
So thank you, Commissioner Merriman. So as Mr. Smith mentioned, the AHO is one of the programs that we'll be bringing back for consideration before the Planning Commission and the City Council. So we are still working through the specifics. We had a study session with the Planning Commission, a study session with the City Council, certainly the mechanics. I think we're more focused on some of the, the numbers, the densities. But how, what other incentives might be available to help utilize the AHO best, I think, could be explored. So if it's something where the Housing Commission's looking to potentially add or enhance to the program of looking at equivalency, you know, square footages, you know, instead of a density, it might be X amount of square footage or height, those are different metrics in which we can measure and, and still achieve units. So if that's something that the Housing Commission wishes us to sort of consider as part of an incentive, that might be a recommendation that the Housing Commission asks.
Thank you for that. And I hope that there's a little bit more of an opportunity to engage in some of those questions. And I certainly have worked on many, many, many senior housing projects. And later on, the community will sometimes come and be like, wow, it's just not as big as I thought it was going to be. Because there's an idea of what 50 or 100 units are, but that, the massing really shrinks if you are working with a smaller, smaller-sized home. Okay, so thank you for that. I have a couple other questions that jumps around a little bit. I am interested in implementation. We're kind of at the final stages of this housing element. So really, it's a blueprint for how and what we're going to be doing. I'm curious if the city staff is tracking the recent passage of AB 2094 at the state level, which will be a change to the annual report and asks cities to provide the amount of extremely low-income homes that are permitted in a given year. I didn't see a reference to that. So just curious if you're tracking that.
We are aware of that and will be tracking that as part of the programs.
Excellent. I noticed also the 2021 report is not yet posted in the implementation annual report, tracking, just as a FYI. I think that was available about April of last year. So it might be helpful to try to locate that. Okay, so when it comes to the provision of emergency shelter, I'm interested to know a little bit more about how the city is planning to meet that. Obviously, the San Mateo County has made great strides, and we do a lot of collaboration as a city, county endeavor. I'm very proud that the, that the county has moved forward and may be the first county in the state to reach basically functional zero on homelessness, which means that if, that there will be, that homelessness would potentially occur for other reasons, but not for supply-side constraints, that there would be a home available. Are the Home Key Projects in Redwood City and the Navigation Center that's currently underway, is that the primary way that we are going to work
Just one second. There is a program, actually, that addresses this in the housing element. We're just looking to identify that, to give you the reference.
Okay, so we have our own in addition to the county efforts? If that's as simple as that, that?
Right, there would be a city program implemented for that.
Okay, I think that's important because, as you know, many of the students in our various districts struggle, their families struggle with housing insecurity. And as you start to move people around, it becomes a little harder to maintain school enrollment and things like that. So it, it's something that's a concern to me from that perspective. And have, I've had conversations with city school administrators around those very topics and the complications around how to make sure that kids can stay in their district. So that's the perspective that I'm looking at that from. Okay, my last comment slash question is, is around, probably one of my favorite topics, and it's about feasibility. So the two primary ways that the city can bring down costs, which infinitely increases the feasibility of any project, is through either providing certainty or just lowering costs overall. Sometimes that's through density. But it's in a lot of other ways, too. And I have seen various cities really take an aggressive cost-reduction perspective through the housing element document around impact fees, either by waiving them outright or by deferring them, both of which have a huge financial impact to the good. Certainly, a waiver is preferred. But fee deferral is also very helpful. Many probably know that when you go to pick up your building permit, you also pay all the fees. And most developers are using a construction loan. So you're paying interest on something for two years before your project is even, has anybody living in it. And so deferring it to something like when you get your occupancy is very useful. You save on the construction loan interest. So for a $100,000 residential affordable housing project, this is documented in the city of San Mateo, it saves a project $2 million. So I think it's material and that if we could look to see what our neighbors are doing on the fee deferral, that would be helpful. And Sunnyvale also does many fee waivers. And I know that Menlo Park has also waived fees in certain circumstances, but kind of addressing that a little bit more qualitatively, I think, would help in this, in this high-cost environment for building. I saw that there was information on the implementation of SB 330 and on the details of providing certainty around the fee. So I think all of that was, was laid out well. But it wasn't clear to me whether, when this comes back in implementation, if things like fee deferral or waiver would be on the table. I don't know if that needs a response. I think I could just go to my last comment or question, which is really that, very interested in, in the comments made by Pam Jones and would wonder if staff would be able to, at this time, in any way respond, or if that would be something that we could take into account during the implementation. You know that our city is deeply segregated and that this housing element really, we're in uncharted territory as to how to really look at an equity framework through implementing these housing policies. And I'm curious to know if this program is one that's on your radar, if there are other programs that could help us.
Is this in response to the comment about the governmental alliance on race inequality?
Yes.
I don't believe that there is a program currently in the housing element along those lines, but I think that would be pertinent for a recommendation.
Okay, thank you. That would, I mean, I would recommend that we look into it and study it, given the, the real focus of this housing element. And that many cities have this in our region. But, you know, if you look at the othering and belonging maps and other things like that, we have not just high segregation, but high white segregation. And the kind of overlay on that of a real difficulty of people in Bellhaven being able to access the rest of the city. Thank you, that's my, that's my conclusion.
Thank you, Commissioner Merriman. I have a, just a quick clarifying question off of the first point that Commissioner Merriman. Ms. Chow, you said the A, the Affordable Housing Overlay is going to come back for the, sort of the detail to both housing and planning. Will that include the potential to move from 100 to a higher number? Or is that 100 number locked in at this point with the housing element moving through City Council?
So thank you for the question, Chair DeCarty. So. So if we are looking to explore beyond 100, we might need to amend or add an addendum to the SEQA. We would need to further consider that at the time.
And we would need to do that with the SEIR because it potentially goes over 4,000 units? Is that what would trigger it?
At the time of the adoption of the zoning ordinance, it would require its own SEQA. So either it could be covered under the SEIR that the Planning Commission just recommended the City Council to adopt, or there might need to be an additional analysis that demonstrates that an increase in density does not change the level of impacts that were already previously described in the SEIR. So we would have to further evaluate if any additional SEQA analysis is needed beyond what was covered in the document.
All right. So functionally on the affordable housing overlay, there's a bunch on implementation. But if the city actually wants to move off that 100, if I had to interpret this, the City Council should do that now and not later if it makes that go smoothly. Is that a way to be able to say that?
Well, I think even if we wanted to-
If they wanted to do it now, you'd have to go back.
Even if we wanted to change the number in the, in the housing program, I think we would need to evaluate the SEQA. We can further explore that with the consultant going to City Council. But it requires, it would still require, I believe it still would require additional-
Same hassle either way. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner Merriman. Other housing commissioners, questions or comments or input as you all move toward a resolution in front of you this evening? Commissioner Pimentel.
Thank you, Chairman. I wanted to support the comments made previously by Commissioner Nguyen and also by Commissioner Merriman regarding the downtown parking lots as an asset for us to accelerate affordable housing development in the downtown. I'll be voting for the housing element as it stands. But in the field of giving supportive advice to staff, I would say there's two ways for us to pursue this idea. One way is very staff-intensive, focused on changing the zoning upfront, setting, going through a process to set the heights that are determined appropriate for downtown, and then waiting until '24 to begin an RFP process. Another alternative way that is staff-like and more market-responsive would be to simply put out a very simple RFQ or RFI to the marketplace explaining the downtown-owned parking lots and a willingness to enter into a creative structure with a developer who is interested in meeting certain goals of the city, such as a higher proportion of affordable housing. In exchange for that, being able to waive or be flexible on densities and height limits. Another restriction that seems obvious based on the comments that happened 10 years ago and even brought up earlier tonight would be the need to maintain a parking-neutral environment that could accommodate parking for the new development, residential and/or commercial, plus existing parking capacity, all of which could be done if we were able to be flexible and listen to the market in terms of height and density. So I'll thank staff for their great work on the housing element. I'll be voting for it. And I would very much like to support or participate in a process that would be more flexible and lower staff commitment and more market-oriented in terms of inviting developers to offer creative solutions on our low-cost public parking lots downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pimentel. Other housing commission comments or questions or ultimately a motion? Commissioner Nguyen.
So I would like to, I would vote for the, for the current agenda, but I would like to recommend that we expedite the, the process for the downtown parking lot. I don't know if the wording is good enough, but anyway, that's, I would like, you know, the City Council to expedite the process, the zoning and everything else. I just think 2025 is just too far away, and I think we need, we need to, to start on this as soon as possible because that's the most viable option. Everything that you have presented is the best option. In terms of everything, just housing, parking, vitality for the city, you know, no, no, no neighbor objection because there wouldn't be any. It just, it just is close to, close to public transport, transportation across from, from powertrain, and is the, also is the cheapest, too, because we would be having full control. We wouldn't have to buy the land because we own it. So anyway, I would make the one, make the recommendation to, to expedite this particular option.
I have a question for staff on this. So if you could imagine entertaining if Commissioner Nguyen's point was actually turned into a first on a motion, would a motion along the lines of what's essentially written, making a resolution to repeal and then to fully adopt the language in the staff report, with the added direction to City Council to consider greatly expediting the work and focus on creating housing and affordable housing in the city-owned parking lots in downtown, or something like that? Is that a type of language that you could accept this evening? Or would you have guidance to both commissions about if they want to do that and make that point to City Council, or other points to City Council, how to do that?
Thank you, Char DeCarty. And thank you, Commissioner Nguyen, for starting off the conversation around a recommendation of the Housing Commission. So I believe what Commissioner Nguyen outlined is appropriate. She's, my understanding is recommending that the City Council adopt the resolution with comments, recommendation to the City Council to expedite program, I think it's H, H4G?
G.
If I remember.
Thank you, Vice Chair Harris.
To expedite or to move up the timeline for that project. And so I think that would be something that both Planning Commission and the Housing Commission can consider in their recommendations. And then staff will evaluate and bring forward kind of a recommendation on that to the City Council.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Chow. Commissioner Nguyen, I am not putting words or a recommendation on a resolution in your mouth, but I was just utilizing, you were moving us that direction. I wanted to get that clarity. But I will defer to you all on housing about what you would like to do next.
Well, I have a little bit of a process point. I generally recuse myself from discussing downtown parking lots as it may be that my employer would want to submit a request if the city were to go there. So if, I'm just wondering if there would be a way to kind of break apart something so that I could approve the pieces I'd like to approve and hang back on that particular point.
Yep. Question to staff.
Thank you. And our, the attorney, Neradore, is online, and she might be able to help structure that.
If I may ask, would that affect the quorum? Because we only have four on the Housing Commission if Commissioner Merriman is going to maybe perhaps abstain on some parts of this. I'm just wondering because we only have four tonight.
Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, through the chair. I'm not able to offer advice at this point on whether or not there's any potential conflict interest without having any facts or background. And even if I do, I'm not going to be able to render an opinion tonight. But I do not think there is a way to bifurcate this program from your vote. So if you believe that you cannot vote, then we'll need to take a five-minute recess, and I'll speak with Ms. Chow and Mr. Smith about it.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
We've had moments in Planning Commission, Ms. Doherty, where we have essentially done two things that were kind of separate, which was we had a motion and a resolution, or whatever we were acting on. And then we also had a sense of the commission that was not binding and was not essentially formally voted on in any way, but that we made a point that was at least reflected in the minutes, and given that City Council members paid attention to, they would understand that. I offer that just as a question, if that's a pathway through on this, given that I think it's, what I heard from Commissioner Merriman is this is really your call about whether you want to recuse yourself as opposed to whether you should in all of this. But let me, let me turn it back to you, Commissioner Merriman.
Thank you. It's my preference to, to recuse myself from recommending the acceleration of that particular program, if that's possible. I also would say as a, I am also curious because two of my question and comments were kind of in the same vein around additional items that we would want to see considered as it moves forward, one being about studying a waived or deferred fee program, and then the other was around the racial equity training program. So it seems that we have three recommendations that have surfaced through our conversation here, and how we decide to move any of those forward, either together or piecemeal, is the, is the topic for this minute. I guess I would check in with the rest of my commissioners to see how formal we want the friendly amendment or recommendations to be, if we want that to be embedded within our, within our resolution and decision-making.
It sounds like if you're recruiting yourself, Nevada, then we can't entertain this acceleration point. Otherwise, we won't be able to vote in favor of the housing element. So it seems to me that it would be prudent for us not to push this in this forum today.
Commissioner Merriman. So hang on a second, Housing Commission. Let me go to staff and to Ms. Doherty. Do you want your five-minute break right now? And then you all could come back to us. And I, for one, would be very happy to have a five-minute break right now, so that might serve multiple purposes.
Yeah. Through the chair, I think it would be helpful to have that five-minute recess.
Okay. So we will, you have the good questions from the Housing Commissioners on this. To sort through, we will reconvene in five minutes, which by some manner here is like 9:46. So, or five minutes from whatever your watch says at the moment. Thank you.
Sorry to be difficult.
He said he was going outside to go to the bathroom.
Is that one open now? Did somebody go in there?
I don't think so.
It's your granddaughter.
I know, I ate one of these last night. I think no matter how long it's sitting there.
I went out dinner.
Yeah.
I don't think so.
It's your granddaughter.
He went outside.
There's the outdoor.
I know, I ate one of these last night.
I don't think, no matter how long it's sitting there.
I don't know.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I went out dinner.
Yeah.
I really don't know where you're teaching off.
Well.
You know, it's like, yeah, not again.
Wish a lot of those.
Whatever it's David is.
Whatever it's David is.
Get snacks together, get ready.
Get it all right.
30 seconds for Commissioners who are turning cameras back on. All right, welcome back, everybody. So, just to pick up where we left off, we have completed the first part of Item E1 tonight, which is the Planning Commission has voted on elements related to the CEQA and SEIR. We're in essentially Housing Commission-led discussion of their recommendation on the housing element. And after a check-in with staff, the recommendation is that the Housing Commission, if they so desire, can act on the housing element and could amend to that or append to it on any item or items they would like the City Council to pay particular attention to, either expediting or stressing in some way. On the particular element the Commissioner Merriman would like to abstain from, we would then, once that original vote is taken, we would do a separate vote specifically on that item. And with guidance from staff, with Commissioner Merriman abstaining, as opposed to something like a recusal, that that would allow the other Commissioners to be able to make their point with that piece of recommendation to City Council. So, just to reiterate, the pathway here would be first, act on overall housing element, and if there are other aspects that any Commissioner would like to suggest that the Housing Commission look at as part of that recommendation, we'll do those all together. And then, once that's done, we'll come back to the piece that we were just talking about around downtown, and have a separate, unique, and specific recommendation on that. So, the Housing Commissioners. Clear on that?
I move to approve the housing element as proposed.
So, we have a motion from Commissioner Pimentel to approve as proposed. Any questions or comments, Commissioner Merriman?
As a friendly amendment, could I add to two provisions? One, to strengthen a waived or deferred fee program to increase project feasibility, and two, pursue a racial equity training program, such as the GARE. That Pam Jones.
Amendments.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Pimentel, I couldn't hear you on that.
Amendments to my motion. Sorry, I accept amendments to my motion.
All right, so we have a first from Commissioner Pimentel, as recommended by the staff report, with the two amendments from Commissioner Merriman. Do we have a second or other Commissioner questions or comments?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Walker. So, to staff, before we move to any other questions, do you know what are you clear on what this is and what we're voting on? Excuse me, what the Housing Commission is voting on?
So, what we have here is, yes, a motion to approve with the amendments for a waived or deferred fee program. Could we get specificity as to whether that would apply to all projects, or just 100% affordable, or is there?
I'm referring to strengthening some of the provisions that are in the Affordable Housing Overlay area of So I think if we, when we bring that back, if we could make sure to study that and to strengthen it. Is that enough?
Great, thank you, yes. So, waived or deferred fee program, specific to the AHO sites and the area, that would include that, and then inclusion of a racial equity training program, such as the GRE program that was mentioned by Ms. Jones.
Correct.
All right, so with that from staff, Commissioner Pimentel, does that?
Agree.
And on the second, Commissioner Walker, does that work for you?
Yes, I agree.
Okay. So you have a first and a second. Any other questions or comments or points that the Housing Commission would like to make before moving toward a vote? All right, seeing none, I'm going to do my best to do alphabetical order here. Commissioner Merriman?
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Commissioner Nguyen?
Aye.
Commissioner Pimentel?
Commissioner Pimentel?
And Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
So, we have a vote of four ayes, no nays, three Commissioners absent on the first recommendation with the resolution. I'm just going to pause for a second before we take up the second one to make sure that staff is okay with this. Okay.
Yes.
All right, so then, we're now back to the points previously made by several Housing Commissioners around expediting the work in the parking lots downtown. And again, this is one where I think all four Commissioners can discuss how you want to craft this recommendation to City Council. Ultimately, the vote would happen, and I think, Commissioner Merriman, you would be abstaining. But all four of you can participate, but would look for conversation or questions or somebody to craft a recommendation to City Council. Commissioner Nguyen?
Yes, I would like to recommend what we have, but to recommend to the City Council to adopt the H, is it H4G option, the parking lot option, as to expedite that one. And I'm not sure, is my wording okay? I want to expedite that as the primary option.
I think that was the second from Commissioner Pimentel, is that right? To staff, does that language work, essentially the specific element and then the word expedite? And, Housing, staff satisfied, or does that work?
Yes. So I have a recommendation to expedite program H4G related to the downtown parking lot housing. I would, just one thing I would ask, is there anything beyond expedite in terms of timing that you would desire to add?
I mean, I would like for our city to start this year and not wait until next year. I mean, to me, it's a most pressing matter, and it's the most viable option, and we would check off everything on the list that I think many of our residents would approve. Locality, a lot of, you know, mixed use, where we have more businesses, more small business, higher percentage of affordable housing than anywhere else that we have come up with. I think that's the place we should be at. So, I would like to start as soon as possible, so I mean, this year and the next few months. I mean, I don't know if it's possible, I don't know how long the process usually takes, but forgive me if I'm ignorant in this matter. I think Commissioner Pimentel may be more adverse with the, with this part. I don't know, so.
I have Commissioner Merriman with a comment.
Through the chair, I would offer that there are usually two important paths to pursue. One, administrative, which is what I heard Commissioner Pimentel talk about in terms of trying to expedite the selecting of a developer partner through a request for qualifications or something similar to that. Separately, what I have seen other communities, other cities, with their own dedicated source of funding, which Menlo Park is lucky to have a revenue generator that could potentially be used for something like this, is sometimes hire a consultant to do the basic feasibility work to accelerate the process overall. So while you're waiting for the zoning change to come into place, one could grab the title report, start to review the multiple title exceptions and issues that I'm sure that we have with all of the downtown owners and the various ideas about who owns the parking and all of that. So like, the site feasibility issues are going to take a while on something like that, and they can start, you can start to pursue them either through staff time or by third-party staff time, so.
Does a, I guess I'll check with staff first. Does that give you some guidance on expedite, or would you like some further clarification?
I think that's sufficient. We'll note 2023 as the desired beginning of the process, whether that's essentially getting into the site feasibility work as soon as possible.
Okay. And does that work for the Commissioners?
Yes, yes, thank you.
And Commissioner Pimentel, yes. All right, so we have a first from Commissioner Nguyen, a second from Commissioner Pimentel, as summarized by Mr. Smith. Any final comments or questions from Housing Commissioners before we move to a vote?
Just so I'm clear, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Walker?
We're discussing developing downtown into affordable housing. Is that the conversation, or am I somewhere else?
No, that's what we're on, yep.
Okay.
The park, it's essentially focused on the parking lots.
Okay, got it, okay.
All right, thank you for that, Commissioner Walker. Any other final clarifying questions or comments from Housing Commissioners? All right, again, in alphabetical order, we'll go Commissioner Merriman?
Abstain.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Commissioner Nguyen?
Commissioner Pimentel?
Commissioner Pimentel?
And Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
So that recommendation has three ayes and one abstention, and the three absent, Housing Commissioners. All right, to the Housing Commission, thank you. Any further action or comment from the Housing Commission this evening? You are more than welcome to participate as well in the Planning Commission discussion a little bit, but the Planning Commission is about ready to do what you all just did. Any other comments or questions important for Housing Commissioners? All right, by all means, stay, and thank you. Thank you for going first, thank you for your questions. I will at least speak for me as one Planning Commissioner, terrifically helpful to have your input and comments, and glad that we are here together this evening. So we'll now turn to the third act of Item E1, the third and final act, which is for the Planning Commission to also act on recommendation around the housing element. I will point out that the Housing Commission began their deliberations just after nine o'clock, they completed in under an hour, and therefore, as well within our prerogative as a Planning Commission, to emulate their timeliness, and we would all go home at 11:00. But if not, I will pay attention to the clock, and as you know, we'll have to come back at about 10:30, 10:40, because we'd have to vote to be able to continue past 11:00. We don't really have an option here this evening, this is not something that we can actually table or put off to another time, given the timing that this is going before City Council. So with that, I will now turn it to Housing, I'll now turn to Planning Commission. Questions, comments, and ultimately, a recommendation on a resolution? Who would like to go first? Commissioner Barnes, real, just real quick. Commissioner Tate, I cannot see you anywhere in the virtual world at the moment.
I think I'm still here.
Fabulous. So, you are absolutely still here, I just can't see you, which means, when you would like to speak, please just say I would like to be in the queue, or I'd like to go next or something, and we'll slot you in. Does that work?
Let's see if you can, can you see my hand up?
No, unfortunately.
Okay, I'll just say I would like to speak.
Fabulous, that will work just fine, and we will all, of course, understand. Commissioner Barnes?
And your first clarification, would she like to speak now?
Commissioner Tate, would you like the floor now, as long as we've just tested this out?
No, go ahead, Commissioner Barnes.
Great.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Chair, and we do look forward to seeing your hand, Commissioner Tate, at some point. My questions are, well, my first preamble is to say thank you to staff for putting this together, I think there's some really innovative ideas around the acceleration of the housing programs. I do have some understandings I'd like to get as it relates to a couple of these, and these are to help me obviously better understand what is in here. And the first one, I'm looking at page 11 in the staff report, and under Housing Programs, Program H3.G, and this is the zoning text amendments for special needs housing. And within that, I believe I know the definitions, because it's largely what I do for a living, but I would appreciate if you would define, so I'm sure that I know, what you're meaning by transitional, to start off with transitional and supportive, what are your definitions of them as it relates to the special needs housing?
So for this question, I believe Karen Warner is part of the consultant team participating remotely, and I think she could help us address that.
Thank you, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Great, great. These have specific definitions under state law. Transitional housing is housing that has stays between six months to two years, so it's a transition for unhoused people into permanent housing. Supportive housing is long-term permanent housing for special needs populations. Both of these are subsidized, both of these are affordable, they can take different forms, they can be within a single-family home, they can take the form of an apartment building, and what state law requires is that they are treated the same as a similar structured building. So if they were within a single-family home, they needed, they need to be treated the same as any other single-family use in your zoning, and the same as if they were in an apartment building.
Thank you. In the, what's being undertaken here is to explicitly allow, so to remove any question as to whether the underlying zoning would allow for transitional supportive anywhere that there's residential uses, and the density or the development standards associated with that particular development would conform to whatever that zoning district is, is that how this would work?
Yes, exactly.
So for this question, um, I believe Karen Warner is uh, part of the consultant team participating remotely and I think she could help us address that.
Thank you. Can, can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Great, great. Um, these um, have specific definitions under state law. Um, transitional housing um, is housing that has stays between six months to two years. So it's a, it's a transition for unhoused people into um, permanent housing. Um, supportive housing is um, is long-term permanent housing for special needs populations. Both of these are subsidized. Both of these are affordable. They can take different forms. Um, they can be within a single-family home. They can take the form of an apartment building. And what state law requires is that they are treated the same as um, a, a, a similar structured building. So if, if they were within a single-family home, they needed, they need to be treated the same as any other single-family use in your zoning and the same as if they were um, an apartment building.
Thank you. In the um, what's being undertaken here is to explicitly allow, so to remove any question as to whether the underlying zoning would allow for transitional supportive uh, anywhere that there's residential uses. And the density or the development standards associated with that particular development would conform to whatever that zoning district is. Is that how this would work?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you. Um, and then the next piece is allow supportive housing by right in multifamily and mixed-use zones. We just talked about that. Um, small employing, small employee housing. Could you say a little bit more about that? I'm sorry, through the chair to the consultant. Um, my question is, how is small employee housing defined? And what does that constitute?
Uh, again, this is something that has a specific definition in state law. I, I don't have it in front of me, but um, it's um, it's, it's, it's more typical in areas with agricultural use, but it is a requirement in state law that um, six or fewer employees be allowed um, within single-family zones um, as a use by right.
So, uh, knowing that you just caveated that you may not be in, fully versed on it, i- it sounds as if this is referring to occupancy standards within um, a single-family dwelling. Is that, is that correct?
Come, uh, through the chair, DeCarty. Sorry, Commissioner Barnes. Um, I was just reading up on employee housing recently um, under state law. It is a provision where a city, like Karen said, has to treat uh, up to six individuals or employees of a company that are living in a, a dwelling unit. They cannot uh, consider that, they cannot consider, a city cannot consider that as a boarding house or a rooming house or some of these historical, traditional definitions that, that have developed over time that push things into use permits and, you know, different regulatory schemes. Basically has to be treated as a, as, as a family unit essentially or equivalent to a family unit. Um, so imagine a, a six-bedroom house could be rented out to six unrelated individuals. Uh, that's been organized uh, by, by, by an employer or a landlord for that purpose.
Got it. To accrete the thread between the occupants. Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. That's helpful. Thank you.
And we do, we do have a write-up of that in the element on page five dash 11.
Ah.
So it's not just, not just me talking about it. It's, it's in there.
Thank you for that. I'm going to move now to program four, excuse me, H4 dot E. And this is the uh, streamlined project review. This is on page 12 of the staff report. And specifically within there, uh, I am on semi-colon, let's say, three, which says, within the streamlined project review, it eliminates the current use permit requirements for multifamily projects that are R3, R3A, and R4 zoning districts. Um, so my understanding of that would be where they're currently subject to use permits, they won't be, and whatever um, development standards are for that particular um, zoning district or that area, uh, 3, 3A and/or 4 will apply. So the only thing that's being removed is effectively the, the use permit process. Is that correct?
That's correct. The, the development regulations that underlie those districts would remain and we would just evaluate projects against those um, without going forward through the discretionary process.
Got it. And I understand that that does fall in the bucket of streamlined project review. Is, i- is there any? Uh, this is in there because this is uh, more state law oriented or how did this find its way in? What was the thesis behind this? Why, why was this a, a good idea?
I, I can, I can chime in uh, with that. Um, the state has had a long position about um, cities not requiring use permits for multifamily development within multifamily zones. And um, in my experience, they have required jurisdictions to remove CUPs for multifamily uses in multifamily zones. Um, and so that's, that's addressing um, the state in, in trying to facilitate development, you know, having your development standards and projects that meet those development standards, being able to um, move through the development process without, you know, the discretionary CUP process.
Thank you for that clarification. That's helpful. I appreciate that. Moving to, thank you, uh, moving to program H4 dot K, the rezone for lower-income shortfall. Uh, and in this one, it calls out um, the purpose is to be uh, added to meet state requirements and then it calls out number one, be allowed by right, be allowed by right development when 20% more or more of the proposed units are affordable to lower-income housing, households, excuse me. So effectively what we're doing here is we're saying um, 20% or greater in, and I want to understand the zones that this um, applies to. So if you've got 20% or greater uh, that is affordable as defined by up to 120%, then you're by right. Uh, so, so what zoning districts is this applicable to is my question?
So this would be applicable to all of the sites that would be rezoned as part of um, this housing element update. So they would, i- any, any development that comes forward that provides 20% or more of the units affordable would be allowed uh, by right development.
If they were touched by the upcoming housing element in some way or another and had a rezone associated with them.
For opportunity sites that are identified.
For the opportunity sites. Okay, got it. And where there is um, less than five, you know, when you've got a five-unit, then you could, it's easy to have, to do the math on that, but say you, for instance, have a, a four-unit, a, a fourplex. As long as you've got one that is um, affordable to a lower-income household, that would be by right. Is, do I read that correctly?
Yes, that would be, that math would work out.
And, and, and it's risky being redundant, affordable being up to 120%, AMI?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Can I just clarify? I thought I read that it was affordable at the low level. Is it, is it moderate?
Yes, I'm sorry. That's a, a good correction. It is for lower-income households. Apologize for that.
Thank you.
LI, in other words, up to 80. So that's the up to 80. Okay, thank you for that. I will, as a commentary on the, actually no, I'll leave it there. Um, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Other commissioners, questions, comments? Vice Chair Harris.
Uh, I have a number of comments, but you know, right on, we might as well just start with this H4 dot K because um, we're, we're talking about it. Um, my understanding is, you know, office is really replacing community-serving retail on downtown El Camino especially. My concern is that, I realize this is only temporary, but we need retail both for current and future residents. And I'm concerned if we have um, some uh, sites where there would be a move to produce office and housing and eliminate uh, community-serving retail. So I'm wondering if there's some language we could add to H4 dot K. Because I'm a little bit concerned about that. I understand it, you somewhat, somewhere it says that there was a, that there was some speaking to developers on this that were concerned about um, retaining the retail, but I'm wondering what, what developers you spoke with about this and, and what specifically did they say? Because I would like to see if we could have some language that maintains that uh, community-serving retail uh, for the time being while we're trying to figure out the rest of the zoning. Questions to staff?
Right. Um, so this is, this is pursuant to state statutes as laid out here and so um, I, I'm not certain that we have the flexibility to, to modify um, some of these to comply with the state requirements. Um, I would add though that in the downtown sub-district, there is the, the retail use requirement on the ground floor. Um, although I think this would supersede that for, for sites that, opportunity sites that are rezoned um, in that area as a state requirement.
Okay, thank you. I didn't, I didn't realize that. Um, so I guess that says to me that we need to move on the zoning so that we don't have any adverse um, situations. Okay, so that was my, that was not going to be my first topic, but I just wanted to dovetail on Commissioner Barnes. Um, I just, in preparation for this meeting, I reread all the comments for public review for the draft housing element. There were a lot of them. So I just wanted to thank all of the individuals and organizations that sent letters. I'm truly amazed at how dedicated many of our community are, such that they're willing to sift through often thousands of pages to help the city with its housing element. And it, it's truly helpful to me and I'm sure all the other commissioners. Um, because there are a lot of things that, um, that, that residents find that we might not find. So I really appreciate that. I also wanted to thank staff. I understand there's been so much on your plates over the past few months. It's staggering. We don't have enough people to do the work. And in fact, my first question is about that. What is our program or do we have a program dedicated to understanding what staffing is going to be required going forward? Um, given all the projects that we have, both in the pipeline and those that we expect to eventually be in the pipeline. Um, what, what is our, what is our plan for managing some of these large projects? Um, and just in general, and then next I'll want to talk about the downtown uh, parking lot projects. To staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. So um, as mentioned in the housing programs, it identifies the timing and which divisions would be responsible or, or be uh, part of each of the different programs. And so what we've identified here um, takes into consideration what our staffing resources are, what might be some of the other projects that um, may not be in the housing element, but that may be part of um, work that a department does. And so we try to give a realistic um, effort in, in terms of like what can be accomplished. And so I know there's a lot of interest in seeing things expedited and, and move forward. It, it's an eight-year planning period. We, we can't, uh, for lack of a better word, you know, have all of our programs be done in the, in the first year. And so what we try to do is prioritize what might be needed to help implement uh, some of the, the housing that is needed to meet our arena. So you see that our rezoning programs are concentrated in the first part of um, 2023 following the adoption of the housing element. Um, prioritizing that also helps then the city meet its arena. Um, we also are looking um, to do the displacement strategy and some of the actions um, that were discussed here this evening um, to help um, maintain our, our residents and keep um, our, our citizens here. Um, and so we're trying to balance, you know, the preservation and the production, um, but also recognize that, you know, we are a, a smaller housing division, planning division. Um, and, and trying to adjust what, what programs we can advance in the eight-year planning period.
Okay, so I guess follow-up to that. So I think what you're saying is for each program, you've figured out um, you know, who, which department's going to work on it. But the way that you answered that question makes me think that perhaps you're saying that you crafted the programs around the people that you have available or to the extent the timing is based on the people that you have available today. Is that what you're saying? Because I, that, to, to me is a little bit concerning. Given that there are so many urgent priorities, um, I guess I would want to see what, what we, what you would want to have in terms of staffing versus trying to do what we have, or trying to do what we're trying to do with the staffing that we have today.
Right. And that's, and that's a, a balance with our, our budgeting process and looking at our FTE. And so absent of having that information for this eight-year planning period, we're working with what we know today. And certainly if things become prioritized over this planning period, there's nothing that would preclude us from moving things forward quicker if we do have um, additional staffing resources.
Okay. Um, well, with that, um, I guess the first thing that I know that I would like to expedite and I've heard that I'm not the only one is H4 dot G, the downtown parking lots. Um, I mean, as, as many of us have said that this is our best chance to develop affordable housing. Are really our best shot at meeting arena obligations. So you know, there are so many priorities, but this one, it seems that it's going to take a lot of time and it's going to take a lot of, you know, ma- hours, man, woman hours. Um, and, and to hire the right people to do that work. So I'm a little bit, um, I'm concerned and I think that I would also like to hope that, that as a planning commission, we might add something in about expediting. Um, and I heard there were three things for expediting. One is that we need to um, expedite, expedite administratively, whether that's an RFQ, um, getting a developer partner, that's got to be done quickly. That we would need to hire a consultant to get us started with some of the site feasibility issues. Um, and we would need to work on the zoning. I think all three of those things could be happening at the same time. If, I, I think we're going to need to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time in order to get this done um, in the timing. So I, as my other commissioners are probably thinking the same things about this, hopefully we can come up with maybe some wording that we'd like to add if possible into our eventual motion. I have a couple really, I have a couple smaller things. One is um, on H2 dot D, the ADU legalization. Uh, we write utilize the city newsletter website and other social media outlets to initiate a marketing program for homeowners of the benefits of ADUs and legalizing unpermitted units. Um, I'm just wondering, I'm concerned if we are using the city newsletter and our website. When you say other social media outlets, are you talking about ads? Because I'm just not sure most people, I, I, I don't think most people read the city newsletter or the website. I don't know how to say that delicately. Um, but I'm just, I'm, I want to ensure that we do reach out to people in, in some ways. And so when you say other social media outlets, I'm just wondering what, what is meant by that?
So the city does have other, um, other channels, social, social media channels, Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, those, those types of networks that we do have posts and targeted um, releases of information to the public. And so I think that's what's being referred to there.
And so just to confirm, you're, you're talking about posts or ads?
I think we're talking about posts from the city's accounts on those, those platforms.
Do you have a lot of followers?
Well, a, a few thousand and for some of these.
All right, okay. Okay. I just, I guess, I guess maybe the point is that I, I wanted to see what we, we're planning to do and maybe that needs to be a little bit more robust um, in how we're going to communicate. Okay. Um, inclusionary accessible, accessible units, H2 dot H. Um, where, you say that we have, what are some, what are, we have some incentives that might be provided to encourage these units. And I was wondering, what are some examples of types of incentives? It doesn't say what types of incentives. Do you have some thoughts on that?
Sorry, could you mention the program again?
H2 dot H, the inclusionary accessible units. It's to provide incentives to create inclusionary accessible units. It's to provide incentives to create inclusionary accessible units. It just mentions that there could be some incentives, but I wasn't sure what those incentives might be.
Maybe the numbering might be slightly...
Oh, is it off?
But I can address, I think, the question. So, and that's, you know, part of the process is sort of like what types of incentives, what would make sense. I know as one example, when we did an ADU amendment, this is several years back now, there was interest in providing wheelchair accessibility. And we recognized that in order to do that, you know, for greater widths of doorways or greater turning radiuses around your kitchen or your restroom, it needs more space. And so there were greater square footages that were allowed for accessible units. And so it wasn't necessarily that you had, you know, it's one size fits all, excuse me, square footage, that we did recognize the additional square footage that was needed in order to accommodate accessible units.
Okay, thank you. Another question to staff, so Commissioner Merriman's point about whether we could allow more than 100 dwelling units and for 100% affordable. And I know we had a discussion around if we went to a higher than 100, that that might require some more work on the EIR. I'm just wondering, on our planning commission recommendation, resolution number four, it says we're allowing up to 100 units. And I'm wondering, could we say allowing up to a minimum of 100 dwelling units, knowing that if 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 our zoning gets to that, we might have a potential issue with the with the EIR? I guess what I'm looking for is not ruling out the idea that we may need to go higher than 100 in some instances.
I think that would be a feasible recommendation to modify the resolution. Just thinking about the wording, the exact language around that, you could say a minimum of, or, I might need to think about that a little bit more, but I think something could be crafted to that.
Okay, I would appreciate that. Sorry, almost finished. A couple more things, small things. Transportation, program H4.M. parking requirements. I would like to add or clarify that the in-lu fee should be used to support non-driving transportation. Could we make that clarification? That's program H4.M.
Yes, that could be, that could be included as part of the recommendation.
Okay, terrific, thank you. And then likewise, H6.F., H6.F. transit incentives. We say, particularly in areas further away from transit, but I'm not really sure. I think in, we kind of need them also, especially in transit-rich areas where we have the incentive is, we can really get folks not, get folks completely out of their cars if we have incentive, if we have those transit incentives also in transit-rich areas. So I guess for me, and I'll listen to some other transit experts, I'm just wondering if we want to limit that to areas further away from transit versus also including transit-rich areas, just to incentivize the amount of, reducing the amount of driving and traffic. And I'll let my other commissioners see if they agree with that or not. But if you have a comment, I'm happy to hear it.
That would also be a perfectly good recommendation.
Okay, so I'll wait for my fellow commissioners. Okay, so then the very last thing, and I hate to bring this up, but several callers and several writers have really been concerned about the sites and that several sites have been called into questions, letters from owners stating that they have no intention to build, the Sand Hill VC sites are still there, one of the churches, I'm pretty sure someone wrote a letter. So I'm just, if you could please maybe give me a justification as to why those sites are being left on the list, given that we, not only do we not have evidence that they will be built, we have, in fact, evidence that they won't be. So if you could respond to that, please.
Yes, we, so we evaluated those sites early on. And I think, I guess, to set the table for that question, obviously, you're aware that there are very, very few vacant sites in the community that we can utilize as part of this. And then the other aspect of it is, in order to really affirmatively further the fair housing in the community, looking to spread the housing opportunities throughout the community. And so we've tried to locate sites that meet HCD's requirements for a certain size, half acre to 10 acres, throughout the community that can meet, that can meet those requirements. We did receive feedback from certain property owners that they were not interested at this time in development of affordable housing on their sites. And we did take those sites to city council, I believe. I'd have to think back if it, I don't know exactly when it was, at some point last year, for their their determination as to whether or not to leave those sites on the list or remove them. And ultimately, council asked us to maintain those sites on the list. So we have done that. And then in conversations with HCD on the topic of whether or not a site can be included if a if a owner has written and said that they're not interested in this time, HCD has indicated that that is not by itself a reason that a site could not be maintained on a list. So that plays into it as well.
I guess, I guess that I'll leave it at that. I think I'm finished for now. Thank you.
Commissioner Tate, would you like in, or I have Commissioner Schindler, who is ready to go?
I can go now. Excuse me. I'm sorry, my lights will probably start flashing here. So I have a, the first thing I'd like to know is, I want to go back to Ms. Jones's comment earlier, and I am also curious to this. So maybe staff can help me and Ms. Jones with it. And that is, how really does the environmental justice element and the housing element, how do they influence each other or how do they overlap and go together? And I might not be asking that very well, but...
Great, thank you, Commissioner. So just to provide some clarification between the differences between the two elements, the housing element is specifically a standalone document, and the housing element needs to address affirmatively furthering fair housing?
I'm sorry, real quick, could you identify yourself? I apologize.
Oh, Sung Kwan, principal planner from M Group.
Fabulous, thank you. Please continue.
And so as part of the housing element, the housing element needs to address affirmatively furthering fair housing from a site selection perspective, from an outreach perspective, and then also from policy development perspective. And so as part of the site selection, the project team wanted to spread out the housing sites across the entire city, with the exception of the Bayfront, so that affordable housing can be placed throughout the entire city and not just focused in one area. So that's the major difference between that and the environmental justice element, where the environmental justice element focuses on disadvantaged communities or, what was the term? Do you remember the term? I think it was underserved communities as defined by the environmental justice element. And those are, that area is kind of focused in the Bayfront. And so where the housing element is focusing on expanding housing opportunities throughout the city, the environmental justice element is focusing on existing areas where there are environmental justice issues that are specific. And so the purpose of the environmental justice element is to focus on those specific areas and provide benefits, provide policy changes, provide resources potentially to improve the lives of the people within those particular areas. So does that help kind of clarify sort of the difference between the housing element and the environmental justice element?
Well, I'm not sure, because some of the programs that fall under the the housing element will definitely impact the people in the underserved community, right? So, so I guess in essence, they do support one another in some some regards, is that right?
Yes, so the housing element is designed to not just have housing across the entire city, but to provide housing support services and other benefits across the entire city. And that can also apply to disadvantaged communities and underserved communities.
Okay, so that brings me to H2.E., and I believe that that's a housing assistance program. And I think I don't, well, I know, I don't really understand this program fully, because when I look at it and then I look at what's not listed in H5.F., I'm a little concerned because we're, we're looking at expanding our housing inventory, but we still aren't really doing anything or don't have a program in place. And Ms. Chau, we did discuss this a few weeks ago, as a potential with the how to use BMR funds, but we don't have anything available to get people ready to be able to move into these units. And by that meaning, to help them with fiscal responsibility, be able to have their move-in money and to work on credit score, and many people that are in underserved communities who would be prime candidates to be able to move into units if they, you know, do come to be developed soon in the parking lots, a lot of those folks are unbanked. So, so their ability to just move quickly, to be able to move into a unit, is not there. So I'm hoping that something will be built in somewhere and funds provided to help with move-in ready, so people, even renters are move-in ready, since there is something going to be available and through another entity at that for down payment assistance for low-income people, you know, loans that are that are cheaper. So I'm hoping that something's being being worked out in that area. And I'd be interested to hear whether or not that has even been a topic of conversation, and how can we get that written into into something here with the housing element? That's a question to staff.
So through the chair, it's program H2.E., the anti-displacement strategy. One of the, one of the policies for consideration as part of that would be to identifying new sources of funding for anti-displacement efforts. And so I think perhaps that that could play into the concerns that you're you're expressing there.
For sure. I just would like to see it called out instead of as as a initiative, as opposed to there just being a blanket there. As I see this as being a problem going forward with Willow Village and all the other units that are coming up in the Bayfront area as well, that folks are not going to be ready to move in, so someone else will be able to take those units instead of people that are in the community.
If I may, through the chairs, thank you, Commissioner Tate. And you have mentioned also program H5.F., which is the first-time homebuyer program. Are you, is there the interest to strengthen the language that centered around there? It talks about offering first-time moderate home income, homebuyers down payment assistant loans. I know there's another program that Commissioner Harris was mentioning about outreach and education. And so I think some of these programs work together. So like, you know, you know, what is finding, you know, how to become more financially ready to be a homebuyer? And then there's the the program itself that, in partnership with HART, looking at opportunities to, and I believe HART does do homebuyer program classes. But I think what I'm hearing is also providing that financial readiness, like monetary financial readiness in order to provide assistance in purchasing a home.
No, I'm talking about rental. People are not ready to rent.
Okay, so it would be in addition to or separate from first-time buyer, this is for...
Correct. It would be, it would be in addition to that program.
Great, thank you for the clarification.
So, so yeah, it would definitely be in addition to and for renters, not for for people who are purchasing. It looks like, you know, you already have a provision in there for that. And if I'm not mistaken, there used to be a program in place years and years and years ago, probably with redevelopment funds for first-time homebuyers and down payments and various loans at low interest. So it would, for homeowners. So it'd be great to have something available, as I said, for renters, because we already know people are getting shut out and folks want to be in the community, and they just aren't ready because they're spending all their money just to survive, and they don't necessarily know how to budget or any of that. So the education is valuable. As far as the parking lots are concerned, I definitely agree with the Housing Commission and with Commissioner Harris, who just spoke earlier about trying to fast-track developing those lots. And I do think, she said it wonderfully, walking and chew gum to try to get the project pushed and analyzed and know what's going, what's going on so that ground can be broken sooner than later. I shared a story a couple meetings ago, and that is my very first Housing Commission meeting, as, you know, as a housing commissioner, a gentleman came in and made public comment about using the parking lots for housing. And that was, wow, that was many, many, many years ago. And now we're at this point that we can consider doing something with it. So I hope that we move swiftly. And as everyone else has already said, it should be an easy win because it's land that we already have, and we're not going out to seek purchasing anything. I believe that's all I have for now, was just those points. I wanted some clarity on the environmental justice and somewhere written in specifically for a move-in readiness for renters. And those were my big items. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tate. Before I go to Commissioner Schindler, as promised, I will check in and do a time check. We have heard from some from three commissioners, they may have more. We have not heard from three other commissioners, nor have we got to the point of crafting a recommendation or resolution, and it is 14 minutes to 11:00. So I will say with confidence that we will not end our work at 11:00. I would entertain a motion that would take us to 11:30 and some forbearance if I push us to end sooner, if possible. But I also would would love to hear from any commissioner if, in fact, 11 o'clock is your drop date and you need to be gone. We have to have four commissioners, and frankly, it would be a shame if we didn't have every commissioner who has already invested a lot of time here this evening. So with that, let me pause. I think the first question is, any commissioner that has extraordinary heartburn has to leave by 11:00. That would be good to know. And then I do need to have a motion a second. We need to vote on an extension. I'd rather just do it to 11:30 and hope we get done earlier, as opposed to saying 11:10, and then have to do it 11:20, and then have to do it 11:30. So with that guidance... So with that guidance, I need some commissioner help. Vice Chair Harris.
I can make a motion that we stay till 11:30.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a first from Harris, a second from Tate, that we will extend this meeting to 11:30. If we're bumping up against that, I will come back at 11:25 and see where we are. But we all can read time and we all know where we are. So I think we can adjust our comments accordingly. With that, any questions about what we're voting on, commissioners? All right, Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
Although yes as well, so we are authorized to extend to 11:30. Terrific. Commissioner Schindler, thank you for your patience. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. In the interest of time, I will try and be succinct and move quickly through my points. I want to just express appreciation for the depth and breadth of material in this report, going through and particularly reading the Programs and Policies section, including the red lines reflecting comments from commissioners, council, and the community over the last couple of months, just is very impressive and actually makes me really excited about what this community can accomplish in the next eight years. What I'd just love to reiterate is my own feeling about accountability and tracking progress. I think a speaker from the community mentioned this earlier today. I think it's essential to do some kind of an annual check-in in a public forum in a structured way, not necessarily for all of the dozens of programs that are listed here, but certainly for the ones that are hot, for these commissions and for the, and most visible and most impactful for the community. I want to, so that's just sort of a color commentary. I do want to just go back and share my own thoughts on the density question that came up and how it relates to the SEIR. I was hoping that when we moved into the zoning discussion component of this, there would be, I would actually assume that there would be an opportunity for the density to go up higher than 100 and even potentially in combination with all of the other bonuses that are contemplated in the housing element. So there are bonuses contemplated for accessibility and for multi-bedroom developments. And I was hoping that in the discussions related to zoning, we could get into some more creative combinations of all of those different possible zones, those density bonuses. And I want to be sure that I understand the EIR impact. If the EIR for the housing element remains as-is, can the EIR be dressed on a project-by-project basis if it goes over a density of 100 dwelling units per acre? Does it become, instead of the blanket EIR, a project-specific EIR?
So I think what would happen is when we come forward with the zoning changes piece for adoption, we would need to check against the EIR that's adopted for this program-level project. And then if, say, it was 125, 150 dwelling units per acre was the recommendation, we may need to do an additional clearance through an addendum or something like that to implement those zoning changes across that zoning district. But it wouldn't necessarily, each individual project also needs to do its own environmental review. But if we do that addendum with the rezoning, then it covers projects that would come in within those densities that would be set at that level. Does that help?
I think so. So if I'm understanding correctly, right, if we can get a program-level EIR, it wouldn't necessarily require every individual project to go through the same level of scrutiny.
Right, it would be an addendum to this program SEIR that we're doing for the housing element now.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Schindler, could I just ask a real quick clarifying question on this? What triggers that? Because this SEIR goes up to 4,000 units of housing. Is it the point that a density, you just don't know if a density of 125 might put us over the 4,000? Is that really what's at play here?
Right, so what was studied in the EIR went up to 100 dwelling units per acre. And so that was sort of the max that was envisioned at the very start of this process. There could be intensification of potential impacts in different areas by going with additional density, which may mean additional height, things like that that would come into play. And so we would have to evaluate that against what we took into account when we started the EIR, which was 100 dwelling units per acre being sort of the top.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it, Commissioner.
Thank you. Each additional question is sort of giving more clarity in terms of what, for me at least, what the process is, right? So we need to do zoning and then potentially a revisitation of the SEIR. Okay, thank you, that's very helpful. Commissioner Harris asked a number of the questions that I was concerned about as it related to the list of sites. I actually just, I had expected to see some of the things that she had asked questions about in terms of this next revision, just with weighing in on which sites were left in despite feedback from the community, or potentially which sites were not added despite requests from the community. So I think we've addressed that, and I'm not going to ask, because there's a follow-up question. I do have a somewhat related question about the calculation of, I want to make sure I get the vocabulary right here, basically the discounting factor. The realistic capacity adjustments, right? So the multiplication that goes with each of them. Is it possible, or is it more, I guess, is it permissible to HCD to do site-specific calculations?
So are you saying for each of the opportunities, sites going in and doing?
I think so. And I'm asking primarily because there, again, in the feedback from the community, right, there were requests that said, look, it's not a 90% likelihood in this particular instance, we have information that indicates otherwise. So I'm curious whether that is even a permissible option to HCD, or whether you kind of need to make blanket assumptions across classes of sites.
So the HCD guidebook for how to do this lays out those adjustment factors, and I don't think I've seen it described as a site-by-site basis. But I think what we've done in setting those factors is, it could be challenging for some of those factors because essentially what we're looking at is how have projects developed in Menlo Park or in San Mateo County? And sometimes we're pulling from a list of 10 to 12 projects or more and getting a sense for what the average density or, you know, what's coming in for those particular projects. And so we've done that more aggregate approach, I think based on the idea that that was what HCD was recommending to us.
Thank you, I appreciate the clarification. And I think that also helps just sort of put a constructive lens on some of the feedback that we've heard related to the sites, too. And then my final thought that I'll share here, again, I also am interested in seeing H4G in the parking lots accelerated or moving as quickly as possible. And so like that, our friends in the Housing Commission and a number of the other planning commissioners would want to see that made as a recommendation to council with the possible language that council asks staff for some specific recommendations, like the top two or three things, be it resources, money, or other things I'm not able to come up with at this time of night, creative ideas about what would accelerate the process. So that would be my steer to council, is to ask for the top couple of things that would accelerate. And I'll hand it back to you, Chair.
Thanks, Commissioner Schindler. Commissioner Doe?
Thank you, I wasn't, I hope I didn't cut you off from your own comments. So thank you for this tremendous amount of work, and I just wanted to quickly support the Housing Commission and other planning commissioners' comments that we urge the development of the downtown parking lots soon, and as well as other commissioners concerned that umbrella studied of the 4,000 units, it does give us the flexibility to explore densities above 100 dwelling units when we come to exploring the zoning. So I just want to echo those comments. And I also wanted to second Vice Chair Harris's comments about specifying that the in-loof fees go to non-car, specifically improvements. And I think you were also soliciting, Vice Chair Harris was soliciting feedback on, do we need transit incentives for areas that are already transit-rich? And I would say that if we can offer them, I maybe would suggest that we do, just because maybe we need extra, just push it over the edge to overcome some old habits being, you know, getting in the car kind of thing. And I had a question about the outreach. I think it's, one of the programs does say that literature will be in multilingual English and Spanish. So I just wanted to clarify that community meetings, if those are also, will they have translation services and be in two languages? I'm imagining this kind of conversation that we're having tonight would be pretty much impossible to understand if English weren't my first language. And so just want to ask that question of staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Doe. And certainly we'll want to make sure that we provide the tools to allow all of our members of our community to be able to participate. And so we are starting, as this program mentions, excuse me, to do some translation services of our written materials, interpretation services of our community meetings, such as the environmental justice meetings that Mr. Smith mentioned earlier. We are having, instead of translation or interpretation services, we're having the actual meeting conducted in Spanish, so two separate meetings. I think we can explore other opportunities. You know, this is something that's sort of beyond, you know, sort of citywide, like where do we want to head? I know we've had some of our city council meetings done with interpretation example being Willow Village. So I think this is something that, you know, we'll continue to keep in the back of our minds and how can we improve to making sure that everyone has the access to these meetings.
And thank you for clarifying that it goes beyond just the written material because sometimes in these conversations, it can be so complex and hard to follow, and also more work, I would imagine, to translate than a brochure. I also had a question about the displacement, sorry, anti-displacement strategies. In the program description, it says that strategies will be developed by the end of 2026. And, I mean, I imagine that the development of programs takes a while, but I just want to understand, in the four years until the end of 2026, what will be happening on that arena? Because I heard you mention earlier that it was a matter of great urgency, we also heard from community members, but then in the document I'm reading, by the end of 2026. So if you could just speak to what's happening between now and then?
So in the red line document, it has been updated to specify that program implementation would be initiated by June 2024 for specific items.
Okay, I'm sorry, I must have, I actually missed that then. So thank you for that correction.
Yeah, there are specific items that would be addressed by June 2024, and then certain items beyond that could go through 2027.
Okay, great, thank you. I think I am done for now.
All right, other commissioners? Commissioner Barnes, you had clarifying questions but haven't had input yet. Commissioner Barnes?
I'm sorry, could you say that again, please?
Just recognizing that other commissioners have had input with direction, your initial comments were a lot, were questions, clarifying questions.
I'm not offended. I'm happy to go. Did you have something that you wanted to?
No, all yours.
Thank you. So a question, what I'm seeking to do at this point is find out a little bit more about the parking garage, because we've had so much discussion about it. And I'm going to ask a clarifying question to the chair, to staff, if it's okay. What's been the community engagement process to date as it relates to the potential sighting of residential in this area? I know that, and I'll kind of front-run the issue by saying, I know that when the downtown specific plan was being contemplated, there was a parking garage that was contemplated. And, you know, obviously there was reaction to that. Has there been anything specific to housing on a parking lot to date?
So as you mentioned, during the specific plan, there was some discussion around development on those lots, but I don't believe that there has been discussion since that time. And so this would be part of sort of rolling out the program, is getting that input.
Thank you for that. And as someone who does, who's engaged in community engagement processes for public-private and specifically for building, you know, housing and supportive housing, I think what is missing in this discussion is the component of community engagement. There are some, you know, very real stakeholders in that area, some of them who run businesses who have a lot to say about this. And I don't know what they are saying or would say, but what I do know is when we did the downtown specific plan, folks went apoplectic about the idea of taking parking and building a garage. Ostensibly, what we're talking about here is taking, and I'm not weighing in on the good or the bad of it, the merit of it, but rather taking dirt, building housing, this is going to have to be a light tech project, so you're not going to get material parking in it other than parking for what's, for the residents. You're going to have a residential development, and then you're going to potentially need to build another parking garage or not, but you have to have those discussions. So I think as part of this process, I would support the encouragement of council to be thinking strategically about the first step in this process, which is, as with any process, you've got the listening component of it, you've got the visioning component of it, you've got the design component of it. I think that's the first step here. And I think we are in somewhat of our own feedback loop in terms of this initiative on those sites. But I think at the project's peril, you front-run, or you skip folks that want to weigh in and have vested interest in this project as well. And the public outreach project, I think, is critical to this and understanding, you know, what's the temperature for this and who are the stakeholders and what are their interests in this and, you know, how this impacts them. So I think that first process, as opposed to, for instance, you know, an RFSQ, which is a request for statement of qualifications, or request for qualifications, which basically says, you know, who does this stuff? And of course, there's people that knew it. Then the next question is, okay, great, issue an RFO or an RFQ, an RFP for the project. We have to define the project. So what is the project as defined? Is it only for housing? Is it housing replacement parking? What's the temperature? You can't have a meaningful response on the subject unless there is a baked vision for the project. And there's some level of, there's some level of certainty or certitude that the project has community support to move forward if you're going to get anyone to spec time on responding to requests for proposal on the project because they want to know what it is that they're going to be talking about and why would they expect time on something that is not vetted yet or doesn't seem to have the right direction, either political will or monetary will on it. So I think on this, we're skipping that first step, which is the listening part of it in terms of the stakeholders in that area and what is going to work or not work and how to kind of massage that. And that's a process that jumping forward is inviting, it feels like a short way to get there, but it can be a very, if not get there, but it can be a very, if not circuitous route, a non-productive route, because you don't take people along with you. So my ask in this process is, yes, advance and prompt council to get after it. And also, this community piece of it is the first step in the process in terms of the listening part of it and the community engagement part of it. So that has to be at the front end of it, and including, and along the way, feasibility studies as to what's going to happen there. So those are my thoughts on that. And I don't know if we have any other commissioners, but, I mean, we're getting somewhat close, I think. I'll be happy to make a motion that we adopt the housing element. Although, is there any firsts?
No, no, there's no firsts. So, yeah, perfectly fine. So we have a first to adopt the housing element. I, for one, would like to add potentially some friendly additions to that, but I also have just a couple of points I want to make and questions on this. So first, I'll just echo what Vice Chair Harris said really well, other commissioners said, which is, the community engagement and the depth of community engagement has been phenomenal. Their research, their putting that information out there has been extraordinarily helpful to me, and I hope to the city council and the staff. And then also just echo the thanks to staff for the efforts, the turnaround time. You know, you really are under the gun and under resourced with so much going on here. And really just thank you for your service and thank you for your dedication on this. It's really, it comes through, and it's really important. I also just overall think that this is all headed in the right way. The process is working, community feedback, HCD, a bunch of the stuff that you changed in the Red Line, for what I see is directionally really, really strong. I think that might have been the first comment that Housing Commissioner Merriman said way back at the beginning a little bit in some of this, and I would echo that. As a starting point, I, for me tonight, I would say that the three additional points that the Housing Commission put in play tonight, I would support. So if we're ultimately looking for a recommendation and resolution, I liked what the Housing Commission did, and I valued their comments. I also generally am very much aligned with the comments from Vice Chair Harris, appreciated Commissioner Tate's point, Commissioner Schindler's, and Commissioner Doe's, especially on the transportation pieces. I would echo my frustration around the density. This happens in Planning Commission all the time, it feels like, which is, well, the time to put this in place is at the program EIR, but you can't quite get it done at the program EIR. So then you come back and you have a project-specific EIR, and you've already, I mean, so I often feel like that I knew both places that we were supposed to be able to get something done, and then it turns out that whatever place we're in, it turns out the other one was the right one to have done something with. And this is how I feel about density right now, and it's frustrating. So I appreciate the point, and if you're going to go from 80 to 100, and 100 is already used one part of the community, that makes sense, but it really is kind of pulling it out of a hat. And so I don't really love the rigor behind that, especially because that was a moment in time, where at a different moment in time, there's been incredible progress about uses of materials, layout, design, all that kind of thing. So I'll just echo that the density thing is really frustrating for me. I think, again, Commissioner Merriman laid that out, there are only a couple levers that we have in front of us in order to be able to get this done. That's a big one. I know I just said I support the Housing Commission pieces. I just would put a pin on Ms. Jones's comments about the government reliance on race and equity, or some similar program. I think that's hugely important. The blind spots that we have as individuals and in implementation are extraordinary, and the fact for staff and others to pay attention to that, I think, would take a good document and make sure that it actually got implemented. On displacement, I appreciate that we're squeezing the timeline back to 2024. You know, I know you have a loading order problem. I appreciate Vice Chair's comment and your answer, Ms. Chow, about staffing. You've got to do it with the staffing you have. But displacement is like, it sort of seems like the first order business, right? If we've got a hole in the bucket, what are we doing, building the bigger bucket? So I just, it feels like that's hugely important. And then in addition to displacement, did you consider anything that would essentially be, I mean, rent control immediately has everybody like up in arms, but did you consider specific provisions that would actually dampen on rent, massive increases either for current renters or for prospective renters, or in some way that would dampen market rate mechanisms in there? And could, what happened? Were they considered? Are there some in there that I missed? And if they weren't considered, why not? Or I guess I could also say, or is this the direction you have from the city council to come back in June 2024? Is that in that direction from city council? So I'm sorry, Ms. Chow, you're about ready to answer.
No, thank you, Chair DeCarty. So what the city council provided feedback at their study session in late December was to highlight, I think, some of the strategies in the anti-displacement program. And so there are a number, but there are four programs, three or four programs that they wanted us specifically to sort of raise to that earlier timeline. And so let me just pull up the, the program. But I could go ahead and sort of speak, I think, to the, your original question was about sort of rent control.
Yep.
And so there are state provisions that limit the amount of rental increase. And I think the, the question around that was, not necessarily the rent increase, but who does it apply to? And, and so that is some of the, that was the tenure question on, like, who? So expanding that and making it more applicable to our residents, I think, was sort of the direction versus looking at maybe dampening some of the, what that rent increase would be.
Even further. And that was with direction from council, or just interpretation, if you all about what was feasible?
So the, in terms of tenureship, that was, comments that were received, and then the city council supported it. There was not sort of direct recommendations for the rent percentage.
Yep. On the downtown parking lots, completely support the expediting. I completely support Commissioner Barnes's point. I don't know about the ordering on this. I'm not sure I need to see it go first, but I just would point out that this is going to be a massive public outreach priority as well, and it will need to be done thoughtfully and well. We have comments early this morning about the frustration from the public engagement with the original community member participation in the housing element, that communication's an outreach plan. I've participated historically in one around transportation. That was extraordinarily frustrating about what its purpose was. So it's just a flag that I think those things will be critical to get this to work. I had a question about, you got to a specific number, which is 345. How did we get to that number in downtown of affordable units? I think it says 345 or higher. Just real quick, where did, how did that get calculated, and why are we at 345?
I believe we looked at the acreage of those parking lots, and the density that we were considering under some of the zoning provisions, multiplied it out, and got kind of a base number to work from as sort of the, the minimum amount. Certainly not saying that it couldn't be many more than that.
Yeah, so we're sort of back to the density calculation, or to, yeah, all of those kinds of pieces. I, for one, you know, you sort of get conservative estimates multiplied by conservative estimates, and you end up with sort of really conservative and not very ambitious baseline. And if we're going to do all this work around downtown, and I think we should really challenge ourselves around that 345 number by something that, back to Commissioner Schindler's point, maybe it is worth actually specifically looking at that and really challenging ourselves about what that could look like, best practice now in that mix. But I think the 345, just based on understanding how those things are done, feels to me to be, I understand it, but it feels to me to be woefully low, and that we should be more ambitious.
Certainly. And I would add that we also did apply those adjustment factors to that number for HCD requirements. And so it does sort of, if you want to think of it as sort of artificially low, then it would be.
Yeah, thank you. And then finally, I just had a BMR question, which is, so the increase, look at increasing the requirements, and I apologize, it may be in there. Is the sliding scale actually in there? Is there, is there a specific recommendation, or this is, these are the types of things that you're going to look at in order to develop around BMR?
Yeah, it's the latter. Just setting the seed for looking into it, no specifics yet.
Yeah, I would wish again for some more specificity, at least the ambition about what to do, or some sense of where this could head. I, you know, we've looked at a lot of BMR stuff from a lot of developers, and I think there is room that we could have pushed historically in there, and we've missed opportunities. And so to the extent that there's anything in there that could be more specific or more ambitious now, as opposed to that we're going to study it and look at it. And that is it for my additional comments or questions in this mix. At this point, I would go back to Commissioner Barnes's first on this, and then see if any commissioners have a suggestion based on their listening or understanding of where there is potential interest of adding elements to this. Commissioner Barnes may or may not be interested in adding things to his first, in which case we don't need to have a second, and somebody else can make a first and go other directions. So those are all options before us. I'll pause. Commissioner Barnes, it looked like you had a question or comment, and it's your first, so I'll turn to you.
Yeah, I think maybe other folks might be better at making the sausage than me. I think that procedurally, though, generally, and I know that we've kind of veered from this in the past, I believe it works in that someone makes a first, someone makes a second, the seconder offers, after making the second, friendly amendments, and then it works from that process. It's more of a Robert's Rules. I think we've, in the past, we've had a seconder kind of figure out whether they wanted a second or not, based on what they could or could not get. I think it's first, you make a first, second makes a second, second offers, first can accept or not accept. So on a go-forward basis, we'll do it that way. I think for the purposes of this particular vote, why don't I retract my first, because there's a lot in there, I think, from other folks?
Okay.
And I think other people might be better at making the sausage than I am.
Okay.
And that. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. That's generous, or it's something, but appreciated. So Vice Chair Harris?
Okay, I think I could just about give it a go. I had a couple quick little items. One is, I, I know that, I think we were happy with the Housing Commission's additions, and I know one of them was to accelerate the downtown, but I, I am afraid I did not write down, if somebody could read back to me from staff, what the other two additions were to the Housing Commission's motion.
So the other two items were a waived or deferred fee program addition-
Okay, right.
-specific to the AHO sites, and then a racial train, racial equity training program addition.
Would that be different than adding a program to the housing element to, for the city to engage in race, racial equity training, like the, like the GARE program?
That's what it was.
That's what it was?
That was the intent, yeah.
Okay, got it. Okay, and then I had one other thing that I missed, and a couple people have touched on it, which is the H2E program. I appreciate that some of the programs were pulled forward, but I am concerned that there are other programs that will not go until 2027. And as we were talking about, we have a seriously leaky bucket, and I don't think that we can wait till 2027 for frankly, any of this. So I just, I'm wondering, I would like to accelerate any programs. I want to be sensitive to the fact that we don't have all the staff, but this is something, to me, that is extremely urgent.
Through the chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
Are you looking for acceleration of all of the programs to 2024? Or, and when it says 2027, it doesn't, to clarify, it doesn't mean that we wouldn't be, I think we were thinking of it more as a rolling, as a rollout with four items up front through 2024, and then continuing to add on and address these programs listed here through 2027.
Okay. Okay. All right, so maybe I'll take that out. I need to go back and, I, you know what, I can't, I didn't commit all of those pieces to memory, so I can't, I can't stay on that. Okay, so I would be prepared to make a motion that we accept the housing element, or I guess let's make a recommendation to the city council on the housing element. I've been keeping track of some of the things that everyone said, so I have about nine additions. So they would include, for H4M, the in-lu fees should be used to support non-driving transportation, adding that H6.F transit incentives should be in all parts of the city. H4.K, in the resolution, changed the language, and I would be flexible on this language, up to a minimum of 100 units per acre, or some other language that doesn't lock us in at under 100. The other thing that I forgot to say before, but also on H4K, the title of the wording says, "Consider the Downtown Parking Lots." I'd like to change that wording to "Commit," or some other stronger word than just "Consider," given that this seems to be the number one thing that we're all interested in doing. And in H4K, accelerate the process to develop city-owned parking lots, including the administration, zoning, RFQ process, and community outreach to begin, to begin in 2023, and reconsider the number of units to be greater than 345, or not limiting us to 345. Okay, H, I think this is H2E, per Commissioner Tate, the program to secure funding for renters in, as a, as part of the anti-displacement policies. Okay, I'm going to skip. The Housing Commission waived or deferred fee program. And finally, the, oh, I guess that was the Housing Commission, the, the request that a statement included in the 2023, 2031 to housing element, to add a program to the housing element, that the city will engage in racial equity training along the lines of the GARE program. I think that's all of them. So that would be my motion with all of its amendments.
So if I had to play that back-
It's a mouthful.
H4M in-lu fees going to not driving transit in all parts of the city is number two. H4K, up to a minimum of 100 units per acre, and say, "Commit" rather than "Consider." Number four, accelerate the process for administration zoning, community outreach, and the third one was, and not limit to 345, this is downtown, the third one, and blanking on, I'm sorry.
RFQ process.
An RFQ process. H2E is the program is to secure funding for renters, it's part of the anti-displacement, and then the two pieces from housing, the waived fee program and the racial equity training.
Correct.
So that is a first with those.
It's a mouthful.
Any, I'm going to pause for a second and just see if there's, generally for the purposes of Planning Commission discussion, are you okay, staff, if we keep going here? Or is there anything you want to clarify or to disavise us of before we keep going?
I think we have everything down. One clarification, I think when, when Commissioner Tate was speaking about securing funding for renter move-in, I understood it to be a new, separate program.
Okay.
And-
And not part of H2.E.
Yes.
Yeah, maybe Commissioner Tate, do you want to, I think that was Vice Chair Harris's effort to include the point you had made. Do you want to comment?
So, so I think it's separate, right? Because it's not, the housing assistance programs are, they read like for, for people who are already tenants in a specific unit. So we're, so I'm talking about helping people be able to move into units when they become available. So maybe it is separate.
And it's rentals, right? You focused on-
Rentals, yes.
Yes, as opposed to for purchase. Okay.
Correct.
Does that work for both Vice Chair Harris as the first and for staff in interpretation? Yes to staff, okay?
Yes.
Yes to Vice Chair Harris, okay?
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. All right, so we have a first with those, one, two, three, four, five, six, I think, seven elements on this. Commissioner, questions or-
five, six, I think, seven elements on this. Commissioner, questions or comments? Commissioner Barnes, yeah?
Clarifying question. And my apologies, there's, we've been talking about 100 units, but I haven't been tracking it super close, and now that it's part of
Yep.
the recommendation. It was, it has been referenced, I believe, Commissioner Harris, and correct me if I'm wrong, as residing within program H4K, is that correct?
Correct.
And what's, where specifically is, does it apply? That, the 100 units?
I think right now, it says it's.
We said differently, where specifically are you applying it? I guess is the better way to say that.
Hold on, I'm trying to find in my notes back here, too many notes. If staff can find it faster.
I think it's H4D.
Oh, it's in H4D?
D is the AHO.
Oh.
And parking lot is G. Parking lots are G.
Okay, so I think that refers to, in the future, when we do the land use and come up with the zoning. So it needs to be, I guess it would need to be a separate piece.
All right, great catch.
It's not H4.K, it's H4.D, I guess.
Okay.
Because the language says, "Providing for densities of up to 100."
Yes.
Units per.
Sorry, I misplaced the K and the D.
Okay, so providing.
And this was Mr. Smith's point earlier in the evening, that there could be language that could work, that didn't get it limited to 100, but didn't put us in an automatic feedback loop going back in the SEIR. I believe you were trying to navigate that, Mr. Smith. Do I have that right?
Yeah, I mean, I think that this is the up to a minimum of 100 dwellings per acre would, that would work.
But isn't that oxymoronic? Up to a minimum of 100?
I think that's right.
It's getting late.
You know, I take credit for that. I couldn't come up with the right language.
Give us a second. We might want to talk about that.
Throw some gold water on our faces.
All right, well, you do that. I'm going to use the chair's prerogative to press, pause on time as it exists in this world, rather than vote again so that we can just move to get out of here unless somebody hollers at me. Just like when you're playing speed chess and you leveled the clock so that nobody was losing time. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, I'm sorry, you can be a commissioner.
Received a promotion.
I don't think that's right. Carry on, though, please.
So for H4D, instead of providing for densities of up to 100 dwelling units per acre, could it be with densities of at least 100 dwelling units per acre?
That's fine with me.
Yeah, I think that.
That's an H4D?
Yep.
But there's no, okay, so I don't see the language that that bolts into. Would that would be a new clause or a new sentence in the, in H4D?
In program H4D, it says, "The AHO will be structured so that the state density bonus incentives can be utilized in conjunction with the AHO, providing for densities of up to 100 dwelling units per acre." And staff might recommend the language.
Yeah, the language is not in the staff report, Commissioner Barnes.
Right, and not, having been an English major, I was just looking where it would bolt in here, because it, okay, so let me, then let me, even if, in a, even if it could go in, I guess I'll express to my fellow commissioners, not every site, I don't know, is going to be appropriate for that. So I think prescribing a minimum, I don't think is good land use policy. I think, I think we can open up the maximum, but prescribing a minimum, I think, is super problematic from a, does it actually work on the site perspective, if I'm understanding, prescribing a minimum on these sites.
Can we just put a plus next to the 100, providing for densities of up to 100?
What about?
Or more units?
With maximum densities of at least 100 dwelling units per acre?
May I? I think what we're solving for is removing the cap of not limiting to 100. And what I'm saying is, and what I had heard from Commissioner Harris was having a minimum, and what I'm hoping I can persuade my fellow commissioners is to say, a minimum can be super problematic, because we just don't know that all sites can, that's good for all sites. So if we open up the top, but don't prescribe the bottom, then I think we get where we need to go, I think. And if that's, if I can nod here, then I'll just look over to you, Mr. Smith, and say, can we language that?
We're looking at staff.
You see now how I arrived at up to a minimum of 100?
So, thank you. I think, as we understand the conversation, is that we don't want this program to limit the conversation to 100 dwelling units to the acre, that there should be consideration for the AHO to be potentially above, above 100 dwelling units to the acre. Is that the intent? So we're not trying to prescribe here what that density is, but we're also trying not to limit through this program that 100 dwelling units to the acre is the maximum?
Yes, exactly.
And I think we're also trying to say that not every parcel that partakes in the AHO would have a floor of 100 as well, too.
Right, and I think what we were attempting to do by saying at least, it's saying the zoning, the AHO zoning would allow at least 100, doesn't mean that you have to go to 100, but it could allow at least 100 dwelling units to the acre, potentially higher, if we can work through the secret review and seeing what that maximum through the process, what the maximum density would be.
So maybe making permissible densities of 100 units per acre or more.
Up to 100 acres, here we go again, up to 100 acres or more. I mean, the problem is that the 100 is sort of arbitrary, but it's absolutely related to the program EIR, so that's the dilemma.
I think we, I think we understand the intent of the commission and can express that to the City Council of giving the flexibility in this program to do something more than 100 dwelling units to the acre.
At this point, if, with the planning commission, we are recommending here, which means they are going to take this and do what they want with it. So I'm, for one, I'm fine with that as an outcome.
If anyone's asking my opinion, I'm fine as well.
Okay.
And ready to vote.
I'm fine, too.
All right.
So may we just get some clarity, maybe we can read back the recommendation as we understand, and just making sure that we have our cross-references to the programs correct. So I can take a stab. Okay, so I think, sorry, I started, so it's program H4M to include language around specifics for the in-leave fee would be for non, to support non-driving uses. H, now I can't read my handwriting, H6.F is to make sure that we are including incentives for transit in all parts and not just those that are far away from transit. H4D is the language that we were just discussing about, providing the ability to go above 100 dwelling units to the acre as part of the AHO. I think I needed the clarification on the language to strike out, to use the word "commit" rather than "consider." I just want to make sure that we have the right program, or at least the title of the program, and we can plug in.
I think that is H4.K, and that was in the title. I can go back and look again.
So I had H4K, and the title is rezoned for lower income shortfall?
No.
So perhaps.
It's the, it's the, it's the parking lots.
It's the, it's the G.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. So, so instead of "consider city-owned land," I believe you're seeking the recommendation to say "commit"?
Yes.
Okay, "commit city-owned land for housing in downtown parking lots." And then there was additional language centered around rezoning, reconsider the number of units above 345, including some language around outreach, and I think we were looking at, there was a specified timeline of 2023, was that captured correctly?
That was in the original, yeah, that was in the original. And that, my understanding is that Commissioner, Vice Chair Harris, was also saying that community outreach, it was, the way to accelerate was to get the administrative stuff lined up, the zoning stuff lined up, pursue potentially an RFQ or RFI and the community outreach, and to, I think that was the walk and chew gum comment around those. Do I have that right?
That is correct. That's four things.
Question to the chair, is there a second on this?
There is not.
Okay, I'd like to make a second.
Hang on a second, let's get the clarity done from Vice Chair, from Ms. Chow, and then, yes.
Great. I think we have just two more. So it was an additional program for rental assistance, for sort of move-in-ready rental assistance. And then there was the additional language that was supported by the Housing Commission regarding the GARE program.
And the waived fee.
And the waived or deferred fee program.
Yep.
Great.
Oh, excuse me.
Yep.
So, I know I'm late with this, but is there some sort of way, or how do, does the commission feel about making a recommendation to move up the anti-displacement category, I guess, to make it more of a priority? Because as we already discovered, something, the timeline was moved up to 2024, but as we can see now, people are moving out like every day. So we need to slow that down to put some protections in place. So I'm not sure if we can encourage council to take a look at those issues also, or programs to implement some sooner than 2024, because if not, there won't be any people in the underserved communities left.
So Commissioner Tate, given the hour right now, rather than putting a year on it, would you be okay if potentially it was added as further accelerate anti-displacement programs?
Yes.
That would at least functionally signal to the City Council, and looking around my fellow commissioners, you might, you might get that through. I'm not sure we're going to get a specific date.
That would be fine with me.
Fantastic, thank you.
So does staff, that would be?
Accelerate the programs associated with anti-displace, further accelerate the programs associated with anti-displacement.
Okay. So this is Vice Chair Harris's first with all of those enumerated elements added in that mix. Okay. And then Commissioner Barnes, you had a, there is not a second. Commissioner Barnes, you had a, you have the floor.
Well, I'm happy to offer a second. The, actually, I'll take my second back and ask Commissioner Harris, I am inclined, I'm inclined to vote for the package. I don't think it's prudent to say, "Commit," over "consider," because I don't know that that's a feasible thing. I don't think that in the real world, that's feasible to commit to city-owned land for housing. It's a priority, but do as you like. I was going to second it and offer that as a friendly amendment, but I don't need to have any imaginations like that. I would ask if you change that from "consider," change it back to "consider" as it's originally stated, I'd be thankful for that. If you don't, that's fine as well.
I am not happy with the word "consider," but I would be willing to come off the word "commit." "Consider the parking lots," just, it doesn't feel as strong as what we've all been talking about tonight. I understand committing is tough, so if there's another word.
Prioritize is pretty good.
I don't feel comfortable with the word "consider."
How about prioritize?
Sold.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I'm a buyer. Thank you, thank you for that consideration.
Somebody just whispered prioritize, Commissioner Schindler. All right.
Okay, Barnes, did you take back your second? Because if so, I'll second this.
Yeah, I think all, given all the wonderful work you've done, Commissioner Tate, I'm happy to have you second it, because I think this should bear your second in recognition of your work so far on this. So are you?
Okay, thanks. So I'm second this chair.
All right, we have a first from Vice Chair Harris, we have a second from Commissioner Tate. Any further questions or comments from commissioners this evening? All right, anything from staff that we need before we proceed on this? Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and move to a vote on the item we just laid out, in alphabetical order, Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
I will vote yes as well. That passes with six votes, four none against, and with Commissioner Riggs's absent this evening.
Commissioner Merriman's sleeping on the corner.
Commissioner Merriman gets big points for staying with us here all the way through this portion of the program. So with that, I will now close item E1. That means we are done with item E, public hearing. We'll now move to informational items. We have item F1, which is a future planning commission meeting schedule. I believe I will turn it to Ms. Chow.
Thank you, thank you, commissioners, for sticking with us this evening. So I am pulling up our agenda, our tentative agendas for those two meetings. But perhaps, let me just get to that real quick, just to give you a sneak preview of our two upcoming meetings. In the meantime, I can just make another plug to continue, for those who are with us this evening, to follow us as we move to the City Council on the 31st of this month, and then our upcoming agenda for the meeting of January 23rd. It looks that we are, have a couple of single-family homes, use permits, variance, and I think we potentially anticipate bringing back the Parkline Study Session, which the city, which the planning commission started and continued. So another good full meeting for conversation that night.
All right, that's the 23rd. It says on this that there's a special meeting on the 6th. Is there a reason that's not a regular meeting, for some reason?
I think it's a regular meeting because that was adopted as part of the Housing Commission calendar. We'll double check.
Planning Commission calendar, okay, that's fine. All right, any questions for staff under informational items?
Do we get a break of like two months?
That's a rhetorical question.
Just take our names off the website. What happened? No more planning commission.
All right, with that, then we'll close item F. We'll move toward adjournment, which we will at, promptly at 11:29 and change this evening. And just a great thanks to everybody who has stuck with us through this evening, to the support of the city, including with the tech to get us up and running, and to the staff for your guidance, and including the M group for all your work with us, and everybody have a great night, and good luck in the next steps on the process. We are adjourned.
Night.
Good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Tate.